I'm gonna fill her in.
So you're filling, but, okay.
You're running the meeting, you know.
Okay, it's me. Okay. So, um, on the consent calendar, um...
I move to approve.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I wanna, sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
I wanted to ask a question. It was regarding the, um, denial of the sign permit for... Didn't we do that, that it would, it was denied without prejudice? But it doesn't say that anywhere. Just, should it say it in the minutes? It just said denied.
I'm not...
I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know. If it doesn't say it anywhere, and you, we wanted to put it in, we voted to put it in because it gives them the opportunity.
We did put that in, if you remember.
Yeah.
So we'll have, then we can't, we'll have to...
You can just change the minutes and just say deny without prejudice.
Okay. Before we approve.
To be applied.
With that amendment, I make a motion.
Okay.
To approve.
Okay.
With that amendment, I'll second it.
Items one and two.
Okay.
Call for vote? All ayes?
Aye.
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 Okay.
For the next item, the applicant has requested if we can move his item from item number six to item number three, if the chairman and the commission are okay with that. So we will be hearing, um, the stage coach road first, instead of the, um, 317 Catalina.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Call for a vote?
We're good.
Aye.
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 Okay, so, uh, that would be item number... Six. Six, so let me... Okay, so item number six is project title Stage Coach Road Repair. Project description: A public hearing for an application for local commis- coastal development permit to repair two sections of Stage Coach Road within the city limit, Avalon's, city of Avalon limit. Okay.
Chairman, was this, this is beyond the gate, correct?
I'm gonna read the recommendations, just one second.
Oh.
Recommendations of staff, based on the preceding discussion of the proposed project compliance with the applic- applicable principles and standards of the Avalon Municipal Code, the recommendation is that the planning commission find the project exempt under section 15269 of the state SEQA guidelines, emergency project. Two, the planning commission adopts the findings to support approval of coastal development permit, including the finding that the project location is not within the defined coastal appealable, so, appealable zone. Okay, I'm gonna open up for a public hearing.
Good evening, Carl Schmack, Catalina Island Company, 150 Metropol. Um, I'm representing the applicant in the Stage Coach Road repairs. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about the, the repairs.
Do we have any conflicts, any interest? Okay, good.
I didn't realize that that was within the city limits. That is.
I don't have any questions, prepare the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a simple one. I don't think they get any simpler than this.
Okay, great, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for addressing it, taking care of it. Thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to speak on this item? Nope.
I have one, um, change, um, although the recommendation is to make the finding about the, uh, appealable zone, it's not actually in the findings. And so, for each one of the items tonight, where there's something in the staff report that says that we have to make the finding, I'm gonna add the following condition. So, this will be on the CUPs as well, that are outside of the appealable zone. It will be, uh, condition number, uh, six, and it's finding number six, and it just simply reads, "The property is not seaward of the appealable area boundary."
So you're gonna add that?
Yeah, it's gonna be added to every single item for number six, and you'll see that going forward. And that basically just means that if someone were to appeal it, they appeal to the city council rather than to the coastal commission.
Okay.
If it's close to the sea, appeal goes to the coastal commission.
Thank you.
Can you state that again, please?
The, the property is not seaward of the appealable area boundary.
Thank you, Scott. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, any discussion on, with commissioners regarding this item? Nope?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Call for vote?
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewer?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, um, item number... Four.
Three?
Huh? No, it's for the... Three.
Uh, hang on, I wanted to...
And this is a public hearing, and the project is 317 Catalina Street for a conditional use permit.
Um, Chairman, may I read a couple of letters before you start?
If, if, before we start, I just wanted to say one thing to the commission. Later on tonight, we are having a study session on, uh, CUPs. Um, if you look in that report, you will see that over the years, we've had many discussions about CUPs, and the council has, on occasion, changed the rules and modified the municipal code. Um, at the last time that we brought to the council, they directed that the planning commission study some concepts that were addressed at the city council. We're gonna be studying some of those tonight, and we'll probably have some carry-on overs, uh, for, for the next meeting. Um, the council has also considered whether to put a moratorium on transient occupancy rentals. They have not decided to do that, which means that until the rules are changed, you apply the rules as they currently exist in the municipal code without regard to proposed changes, the thoughts of the council on what they want to do to change, what the changes might be, what they, what they might not be, because again, the council did not impose a moratorium, and basically that means that the rules that are currently in existence apply to all CUPs. So just wanted to put that on the record, so I don't have to repeat that for every single application that we have.
Thank you, Scott. Project description?
No, wait a minute. Rosio wanted to read two letters.
So I, we have some letters from the surrounding neighbors that I am going to read before you start the whole, um, staff report discussion.
Can you speak into the, so we can, thank you.
So this is from March 7th, from 2019. Dear Planning Commission members, we are against a proposed CUP for a transient rental for 317 Catalina Avenue. As of this date, we have not received a notice from USPS, however, we did see the notice posted on their window. Additionally, the new owners, owners of 317 Catalina has made no attempt to discuss this with us. Both of us will be out of town on a cruise during March and are unable to attend the March 20th meeting. So we would like this letter to be forwarded to each of the planning commissioners. While I am a firm believer of the owner's property rights, the negative impact of another transient rental in such close proximity to my home, and three other transient rentals which are each approved for eight guests, which are 316, 316 and a half, and 319 Catalina, will prevent the quiet enjoyment of our own property. Please deny this request for a CUP transient rental permit. Um, thank you Kurt and Julie Olson, who reside at 312 Catalina.
Is there a reason why they didn't receive a letter?
They confirmed later on that they received it.
Oh, they did receive it? Okay. I missed that, thank you.
This is the second letter. Dear members of the planning commission, I object to the conditional use permit for transient rental for the property located at 317 Catalina Avenue. My property is located at 315 Catalina Avenue. I already have CUPs at 316, 316 and a half, and 319 Catalina Avenue. My main objection is that all these vacation properties are in such close proximity to my property. I feel that this would be unfair to continue the flood of the area of another short-term rental permit. I understand why the property owner would want to capitalize on him investment, and I have nothing against, against him personally, but I believe another CUP will negatively, negatively impact the quality of day-to-day living for me and the surrounding neighbors. There is too much noise, congestion, and parking problems associated with the CUPs in this town, and I would like to see more year-round housing opportunities for people who direct, directly contribute to our community. Properties with vacation permits sit vacant in the off-season while teachers, firemen, medical staff, and average families struggle to find housing. Please think about what is best for the future of our small-town community, and do not approve another CUP. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Bob and Debbie Marcus, who reside at 315 Catalina Avenue. Also, there's several signatures from surrounding neighbors from 311 Catalina, 309, 310, 321, and 345. And this is my last letter. To whom it may concern, I am providing my rental history for the property located at 317 Catalina Avenue. I lived at 317 Catalina Avenue for just over eighteen months. Before this time, my uncle Bobby Shehe rented that home for about five years. In the final stage of this battle against cancer, I became his caretaker and took over the rent. Uh, upon moving in, I started complaining about numerous code violations. These were never addressed. After my uncle's passing in November of 2017, the landlord, landlord proposed a dramatic rent increase. At this time, I told, told them they would have to fix, fix a leaking ceiling, mold, broken windows, loose fitting that provided spaces for rotten to frequently exit and enter the structure. By January of 2018, they told me they had decided to make it a vacation rental. The owner's business partner stated, "We can make more in two weeks on a vacation rental than two months renting to you." After they moved for eviction in July, I moved down in mid-August of 2018. John Baragina, Avalon resident.
Thank you. Okay. So this application is a request for approval of a conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room, or rooms with, or without table board in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than thirty consecutive days duration, transient rental section nine dash six dash six zero three of the Avalon Municipal Code at 317 Catalina. The recommendations from staff.
Elliot should be on page six.
Thank you. Recommendations from staff, based on the preceding discussion of the proposed project's compliance with the applicable principles and standards of the Avalon Municipal Code, the proposed use will not jeopardize, adversely affect, endanger, or otherwise constitute a menace to the public, menace to the public's safety or general welfare, or be materially determ- detrimental to the property of other persons located in the vicinity of such use. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under section 15305 of the state SEQA guidelines. Two, the planning commission adopts resolution number 19 dash 07 approving a conditional use permit and coastal development permit for the operation of a transient rental at 317 Catalina, subject to the attached conditions of approval, including that a vehicle may not be provided to the transient guest. I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Is that for me?
Hi.
I just wanna say that the last letter that she wrote...
Can you give your name and address?
Yeah, can you state your name and address?
Oh, my name's Tom Lambretton, 317 Catalina Avenue. The last letter that was written was a complete and utter lie. Bobby Shehe died in November of sixteen, and that was the last time that anyone was in there legally. It took several months to get, a couple of months to get the caretaker out because he was a, uh, what would you say, when they live there without paying rent?
Squatter.
A deadbeat, is that what you said?
No, squatter. It's called a squatter.
Squatter, yes. And it did take a while to get him out. It was not an amicable or friendly, uh, situation getting him out, and all the things that were written on that letter is just, uh, a lie.
So you never received any, you never received any, any rent from this gentleman that...
No, not the one that wrote the letter. Bobby Shehe, when he was dying, knew the previous owner very, very well, and they were friends, and he was allowing him to stay there.
Okay.
And Bobby paid once in a while, but he died in November of sixteen, and that was the last of the, of...
Well, I just wanted to make sure that no money was transferred from, because that's...
Not, not after, not after November of sixteen.
Because of the two-year...
I understand, and we looked that over real well before we applied for this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any questions? Okay.
I have a question, just a clarification for the applicant on the, and I'll explain why. On the application, it says, um, you'll be using, used as vacation home by owner. So, would you be living there part-time during the year?
We, we bought, there's two families that bought the home a couple of years ago. We've been coming to this home particularly because there's a friend of mine that owned it, uh, for about thirty years. My friend, my family, and my kids have grown up here, and they love this house. And there's something more than just a home for us, okay? We will be using this for our family and to help us offset the cost, because we're not very wealthy people. We wanted to try to see about renting it out a little bit.
And the reason I ask that, which is important, which is one of the provisions in the municipal code that we never actually bring up, but it's in there, and I just wanna read it into the record. It says, "In the absence of other negative findings, where the property that is the only unit owned by the applicant in the city, and the applicant proposes to use the property himself from time to time, the planning commission should approve the application." So what the council, the rule is, is absent, you know, a negative finding, if the person lives in the unit and they own it, then there should be in favor of granting the CUP. We really rarely discuss that, but it's in the code, and I thought I should bring it up.
Thank you.
So what you're, I'm sorry, you go, you go first.
I'm just saying it's extremely pertinent, because what these other people are saying in their letters is that they would like this to be year-round housing, but again, if someone's gonna use it, it's never gonna be year-round housing. So...
And you're saying that, that you're, no one is residing in the house now?
No, it says, all, all it says is, this is what, again, "In the absence of other negative findings, where the property is the only unit owned by the applicant in the city," is it?
Yes.
"And the applicant proposes to use the property, him or herself," I added herself, "from time to time..."
Uh, yes, sir.
"...then the planning commission should approve the application." That's in the absence of other negative findings. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that what the council ruled is, if someone lives in their home, and they own the property, and they're gonna be occasionally having it out, but they're gonna be there, they're gonna be living there, or...
Between the two families that own the home, we have about, uh, eighteen kids, and their kids have kids, and we plan to use it as much as we can, yes.
And so it just says, again, "In the absence of other negative findings, application should be granted." And just for the record, that's, um, UniCode 9 dash 8 point 404 three.
So, D three, a question to you. If this got turned down today, you're not gonna turn around and rent this out as year-round housing, 'cause you bought it to use it?
Uh, we bought it to use it, but we can't afford to use it without some sort of offset for us. If you guys turn this down today, tomorrow it's up for sale. I think the value that something pushing between eight and nine hundred thousand, I can't imagine somebody renting it out at that price.
Economically, it wouldn't make any sense.
Do you, do you have a vacation rental that's going to be managing your property?
I've spoke to a couple of companies. I haven't picked anybody out yet. I didn't want to, you know, go that far.
Okay, 'cause it's, on the application, we, before the application is granted, we're gonna need to know who's gonna be, 'cause that's important that...
That would be fine.
There's an emergency phone number to contact as well? Okay.
Be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You good?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to, in the audience, like to speak on this, um, item? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Anybody on the commission that would...
This is kind of a typical example of CUPs, in, in that if, if it is not approved, it's not gonna be year-round housing, and the city's gonna lose out on twelve percent of whatever they would've made in income on the property. Um, also the fact that someone puts in a letter that's blatantly false about when someone lived in there and died, doesn't sit well with me.
Bart?
I'm sorry. But I, I just think this is, this is a perfect example of one that, you know, it's not gonna become year-round housing. This is not gonna come into the pool at nine hundred thousand dollars. There's no way in God's green earth that someone's gonna rent it out for six thousand dollars a month, which would take to cover the net on a property like this. We're never gonna see it in the, in the, uh, you know, year-round pool.
Is the, is the city responsible for making his payment, which was high? But I take a little issue with the, um, realtor mantra, that nothing will ever become year-round housing, because there are exceptions. It's anecdotal. I don't really see that there's hard evidence in terms of, I mean, maybe most people you know would not pay nine hundred thousand without expecting a, a transient rental.
Well, at this, at this point, we are here for a conditional use permit, and I don't believe that it is our property owner's responsibility to create housing. That's a whole different issue, and their application seems to be in check with all the municipal code requirements and the application requirements. I believe that we are gonna be having a study at the end of this meeting, and it needs to go back to the city council. They're the ones that can change the code. With the code that it is at and the application process, when somebody brings an application, they are required a fair hearing, and this application is, A, B, C, D is, is within the requirements in the judicial system.
I'm, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna ask a question, because my, um, my point of view and my concern has to do with quality of life and, uh, loss of neighborhood, and I think that goes back to the general plan, and I think the flats has an issue with that, the flats as defined in the ordinances of, of the city. So that's my objection, is that I, I think that when we have approached now, um, thirty-eight percent of the flats is, uh, is now, has transient rentals, is that's the, that's the give or take, is that I think it's about quality of life and loss of neighborhood, and that's the part that, that I have issue with in the flats, is, is, relates back to the general plan.
Twelve signatures here from the neighbors that, uh, object because they are fairly impacted in that neighborhood. I mean, they're not, perhaps...
It's not saturated, though.
Not saturated.
Yeah.
Again, so let's just go with what the law is, what the rule is. I'm gonna read you the rule, and then, I'm not saying what, what the determination, but we gotta go by what the municipal code says. The municipal code says, "For neighborhood impacts, the planning commission shall consider the objections of the neighbors and occupants of neighboring properties in determining whether the proposed use is consistent with the surrounding properties and the extent to which such impacts may be mitigated by the imposition of standard conditions or by the imposition of additional conditions." So that's what, that's what the, the rule is, the council set out for neighborhood impacts.
And how does the general plan fit in with its description? How, what it lays out as far as the general plan for Avalon? How is that interpreted alongside the municipal code?
The municipal code is consistent with the general plan, and the general plan has various different, um... One, there's a portion of the general plan that says that we need to preserve, um, housing. There's another portion of the general plan that says we're a vacation community. We need to make certain that we have, um, um, property for visitors. And so the general plan says both things, and so what the, what the CUP does is it balances both those things by saying, "Here are the rules that apply for CUPs. Apply them on a case-by-case basis." And so...
I, I, I see, I, I'm just taking issue with that, because I think there's a point in time where that, um, that what, that you have to evaluate, how does the, the general plan and preservation of neighborhoods, does that apply to the same, you know, there is a point where I could say, "Oh, I just think there's too many. It's diminishing the neighborhood. We have enough transient rentals there, and maybe it's overdone, uh, because we're losing neighborhoods." So I just, I have a little bit of an interpretation of what was laid out in that, as opposed to, um, I think you could see it both ways.
Well, I understand, you have to apply what the rule is.
Right.
And so it's your interpretation of, and applying the facts.
Does not the general plan, um, like, isn't that the, the, the guiding force for the municipal code?
Yes, and the general plan has both things, and the rule that is consistent with the general plan is you evaluate on a case-by-case basis and determine this will have negative impacts on surrounding properties. And can you mitigate those negative impacts? If you can't mitigate the negative impact, then you can deny it. If you can, then you're supposed to grant it.
So it would seem to me that there's other properties there that do the same thing. If, are there any complaints that we've gotten from 316 and all these? Are there registered complaints with the city that we know of, from the other transients that are there?
No, I haven't had any, I have not had any complaints in the past from these three properties.
Okay.
That are CUPs.
So those are the ones immediately surrounding it, and we're not supposed to sit up here and make up law. We're supposed to go by what's already on the book. This is not our, this is not our thing to just make up.
I understand what you're saying. I understand that the code says, but it also, like, there is a little bit of an issue with what...
Discretionary.
Well, it, there is a little bit of an issue, and it also says, when there is concern from local neighbors, that we should be taking that into concern as well. And then, you know, I just think that we're setting up, uh, uh, it's contrary, and I know this is gonna come up for discussion today, but I have, I think there are too many transient rentals in the flats. That's my basic precept, and, and when I read what the general plan tells us about how this, this, this is an issue that we are supposed to make a balance of between, um, tourism use and resident use, that it, it is a problem for me.
So, does this, so...
I've got a technical question.
Okay.
It might help with this. The saturation map shows the property, but it, the property is kinda crunched up in the upper right-hand corner. And what I'm wondering is, the neighbor to the upper right mentions that it's ill-saturated to them, but are there... But are there CUPs for transient rentals just outside of this little saturation map? You see what I'm saying?
No, I, it's displayed on this way because there's nothing next to it.
There's nothing to the other side of it, okay, so it looks.
As you can see in the saturation map, the CUPs are on Upper Catalina and right behind Eucalyptus, there's one right next to the, um, property and one across it, which was mentioned on the staff report.
Okay. So it's close to being saturated, but.
I believe what, uh.
The, yeah, and the saturation requirement is a little strange to me.
That's one of the issues, the saturation, what the current code says is it's a factor that you can consider, but it's not an automatic yes or no, if it's not saturated or if it's saturated, it's just a factor. One of the issues you'll be talking about later tonight is whether you want to make a, a black and white.
So this, yeah, this is confused, so say someone feels like all the flats are saturated and there should be no CUPs on the flats anymore.
You're sure about someone saying that right now?
Yeah, so how, how, how can someone get a fair hearing if they're already against all the flats being?
Or isn't that fair, I mean, it says.
Yeah, that doesn't, yeah.
That's the goofy thing about it, I guess it depends what saturation.
Well, again, again, you have to, you have to apply the facts to each application, what the neighbors say. I will tell you that the council in its determination did not issue a moratorium covering flats or the whole city. It just said, the rules continue to exist for the entire city. And so it didn't make a distinction in their direction of flats versus non-flats. That's, I just have to follow what the rules are and try to be the referee and say, you have to look at this particular property and, and adjacent owners and saturation and make a finding.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at this, it looks like the flats are pretty saturated and you're starting to see dots building up. So to me, that seems legitimate.
And that's where we're getting at.
But then, you know, and then on the other hand, it's, I, I, I know some of the discussion has been, well, it's, if there's a lot in the flats, then why do we even worry about the flats, which I think is not really a good rationale at all, but I mean, that has come up several times. So just, yeah, anyway, I'm struggling with it.
I'm struggling with it because really what it's saying is, is there's, I, if, if, if you don't consider what the general plan says about neighborhood, is that there's not a chance that any gets turned down. I mean, it, it doesn't, so I, I don't, like, you know, I did.
I don't think that's what it says at all.
No, well, it doesn't, but, but it, if, if, we, we, people have come forward and said, there seems to be a large amount of, they, they don't know what the code is, that you literally must be surrounded by transient rentals to be saturation, right? What they see is they have the.
No, actually, it doesn't say that.
Well, I mean, it, it's pretty intense that you have to be fairly surrounded by transient rentals before the code and so.
I don't think so, that's what I'm hearing, it's just, once you get saturated, then pay attention to saturation is all it says. It doesn't, it doesn't add a value judgment.
So if it, if, if someone comes forward.
All it says, I'm just going to, I'm going to go back to the rules. For saturation, the planning commission shall consider whether granting the CUP shall result in any year-round residence located adjacent to the proposed transient rental, having more than a majority of the adjacent residences permitted for transient use. So what the saturation says is if, when you're looking at an application, if there's a year-round unit and as a result of this unit, the year-round unit is going to be surrounded by a majority of transient occupancies, that's a factor to consider. Doesn't mean yes or no, it just means consider.
This case does not look like it's surrounded by a majority of transient rentals. It doesn't.
I drove by, I drove by there as well.
I did as well. I just think if we're going to give people a fair hearing, we've got to go by what's on the books now. If what we discuss later and change things, that's fine, if the city council changes it, but we're not the city council.
No, we are not, but.
We are appointed to just carry out what they've asked us to do.
And give a fair hearing.
Give a fair hearing, someone's paid thirty-two hundred dollars to come in here and talk with us about it. They, one of the letters that came in is completely fraudulent according to a death date.
And there are two others.
And there are two others and one of them specifically mentions that there's not housing for other people in the town to live in, that somehow this is going to become housing, like I said, whether you like realtor mantra or not, no one is going to buy a home for a million dollars and rent it out to you for two or three thousand dollars to make it, it's not going to happen. There's no one that's that charitable.
No, no, but, but if other people that live there feel like it is, it is an area that they are being surrounded by transient rentals, do we not want to take into consideration that is also in the code, we're supposed to consider what they're feeling about that?
The planning commission shall consider the objections of the owners and occupants of neighboring properties and determine.
You can consider it, yes.
But I can tell you right here, I'm sure there's several people sitting right here that would have a problem with one going next door to them anytime. I live around them, I don't have, you know, I don't have any problems with them because they're managed, people know what they're doing. If you, there's a way to complain about it, if you get so many complaints, we can re, we can rescind the CUP.
There's a process.
And I don't feel like we were giving someone a fair hearing if we just come in and say, no.
Well, no, and I am not doing that, I'm doing it to, I'm saying that I think there are too many transient rentals in the flats. That's what I'm saying. And so that's my worry and my concern and my looking at this and looking at what the people are saying that live around it and have written letters and have signed their name to a letter, so that's my issue. And, and I'm not saying that we aren't giving a fair hearing, it's my feeling that there are too many transient rentals in the flats. And I don't have, I mean, like, I live next to them too, so I don't, I just am saying to you, this is, it's, it's asking us to consider what the neighbors say, it's, so anyway, that's my feeling. I don't think it's just that it's, it's, I don't think it should always just be, um, that, that it's, the people, I, I, I just see some points of view that I think are not being fair to the people that live around this, this particular, on the flats, that are dealing with transient rentals all the time and have something to say about it.
Apparently, there's twelve that really don't want to live with hotel rooms around them. On that, on this particular block.
Well, I, with that being said, thank you, Paula, thank you. Any, anybody else, anybody like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. Call for vote.
Commissioner Hall?
No.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
No.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Okay, thank you, and the next item? Sorry, I'm all out of whack because of the change. Okay, so we are on four.
And that, again, all the CUPs will have the condition six that I talked about earlier. Because they're all not, not seaward of the appealable.
Thank you. Okay, so item number four, three, four, one, Eucalyptus, Unit A, conditional use permit for transient rental. Request for approval of the conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room or rooms with or without table board in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than thirty consecutive days duration. Trans, transient rental, section nine dash six, six oh three of the Avalon Municipal Code at three, four, one, Eucalyptus. Staff recommendation. Based on the preceding discussion of the proposed project's compliance with the applicable principles and standards of the Avalon Municipal Code, the proposed use will not jeopardize, adversely affect, endanger, or otherwise constitute a menace, menace to the public health, safety, or general welfare or be materially determined to the property, detrimental to the property or other persons located in the vicinity of such use. Therefore, staff recommends, one, the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under section one, five, three, zero, five of the state SEQA guidelines. Number two, the planning commission adopts resolution number nineteen dash zero, eight, approving a conditional use permit and coastal development permit for the operation of a transient rental at three, four, one, Eucalyptus, Unit A, subject to the attached condition of approval, including that a vehicle may not be provided to the transient guest. Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Would anyone in the audience care to discuss this item on the agenda? Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Howard Hugo and I'm here to answer any questions that you would have. The application.
How long have you had the property?
We bought it, uh, two years ago, well, two and a half years ago.
You use it yourselves?
No, we have, it's a triplex and we rent it out long-term to, uh, two of the occupants. And so two of the three would be long-term and then the, this is the third one.
So you have two units that are currently year-round?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is a non-year-round, this is the one in the middle, right?
Excuse me?
This unit is the one in the middle?
It's, it's a two-story, there's two on the first floor, there's one on the second floor, this is front, front on the first floor.
And just for the record, because I want to make certain, this unit has not been occupied the last two years by someone living there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, we, we, we took out a permit to remodel the place and we've been in the construction phase for a long time. And, and I just want to add in listening to the last discussion, um, I know it's a, a debated issue all over the state. And I understand I can jump on both sides of the table and, and understand the concern. I think the one thing that is a concern of mine is that you have a person like myself that comes to your city and buys a piece of property and walks into the planning department and asks, what are the rules? And then we go ahead and abide by the rules that you set. And then we come to apply for the permit and it's debated whether we get it or not. That doesn't seem right. It seems like you should have rules and you should follow them. And if you don't like the rules, then you change them. But you don't ask an applicant to have a vacant property for two years and pay a three thousand dollar fee to come and hear it debated, whether it's some rule you should follow. It seems awkward. And so I totally understand the frustration of the community, but I don't understand how you can, in essence, change the rules in the middle of the game.
And I would just put on the record, what I just went through was going over the rules and then it's applying the rules to whether the neighbors complained, whether they didn't complain, looking at the property, what's around it and stuff like that. And so this is not an automatic granting, it's a public hearing where people can come and argue back and forth and, like, by any commissions like a jury and they determine things and so. That's, that's your right to write and petition government.
Exactly.
And I think even to add another layer is whatever we decide can be appealed.
True.
By either side.
Yes.
So when you go into this, it's not a clean process, planning is kind of a political process with a permit.
Right.
And tries to be as subjective as possible, but the guidelines are pretty broad.
Right, which makes it awkward in that part of that whole thing is that you have to have it vacant for.
Correct.
Right, that's to, that's to slow down convergence.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a reason for it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
And you're stuck with it, yeah.
And that is what the rules say.
Right.
Right.
And thank you for following the rules.
What do you, on, on your other two units, what are they, one bedrooms, two bedrooms?
Uh, one's a studio and one's a one-bedroom.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Anybody else would like to speak on this item?
Hi again, guys, um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank, uh, both applicants for, uh, doing what they can, um, as they see financially possible with investment on the island. I know that housing is, is a critical issue for everyone in the city. And it will continue to be until there's a pretty wide-reaching, um, determination on how that best be handled. And then we'll probably get it wrong and then we'll have to fix that and kind of adjust that as it goes along the way. But I do know, uh, with, uh, with about fifteen full-time employees here, the contribution that, that, uh, real estate investment, especially as it relates to, uh, vacation rentals, really supports a lot of families on the island and allows them to be able to, uh, pay the cost of living difference that it takes to raise a family here, um, on the island. And, you know, it's, it's never going to be the cheapest place, but it's kind of our little paradise, of course. I appreciate you guys protecting, um, this great island and allowing it to be open for as many people to, uh, be able to afford and come out and enjoy what we already know. So, thank you, that all.
Thank you, Thomas.
I guess we were supposed to know who you were?
Oh, sorry about that, um, Thomas, Alena, I have a vacation rental, I think I'm in, as the applicant from the process.
So would you be the, managing the property?
Correct.
Okay, because the application just says, at this time, there was not one. And so as part of the conditions of approval, yeah, part, part of the conditions of approval for you can actually open it up, you have to identify and provide that information to the city. So even though the planning commission grants a permit, like in the previous one, until you identify who's going to be the manager, it's not in effect.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else I can answer?
On your other properties over there, do you have any, um, problems with complaints by the neighbors on them that have been registered with the city as they're supposed to be?
You know, uh, we, we do have a pretty extensive, uh, list of interactions historically with both the police department and the city and just the community. Being able to be open and, and on the island seven days a week, you know, we, we get walk-ins. So are there, are there problems, are there problems with neighbors? Yes, absolutely there are and, and it's our responsibility and, and yours to hold me to it for us to take care of and, and as you've mentioned, the word you mentioned is mitigate some of those, some of those issues. This is why we're on call and we can come out and help with those kinds of things. I will say that by and large, they're pretty minimal and where I see a lot of conflict in neighborhoods on the island is actually with, uh, long-term occupancy that, that generally exceeds what the house was designed for. And that basically just comes down to, in order to get into, uh, an expensive property for long-term, you're going to have to split the rent with people to come up with that, whatever it is, seven thousand dollars a month. That's, on this island, that's a lot of, uh, breadwinners that it takes to get to, um, living comfortably in that way. So I hope that addresses your question.
What's the proposed occupancy of the transient?
Uh, ten.
Ten?
Yes.
And that's the entire downstairs, then?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, wrong, wrong unit, sorry. Sorry, it's just two. It's two and then the other two units are still staying with residential leasing. So, long-term.
That's a street that is probably the closest to saturation of any.
Besides Clarissa.
Besides Clarissa.
All besides Clarissa.
So, what, can I, can I speak, or is it time now? Um, so, I wanted to, yeah, do you want to close the public hearing?
Are you asking him a question?
Um, not really.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. I'm gonna close the public hearing.
On the saturation maps, um, I want to make sure I understand, so, the blue dot says it's an active surrounding conditional use permit, but all the rest of the circles that are around there are not, or?
No, sorry, that was a little of, I think I kind of put it blue on mistake, but all the circles are the active, and the star is the applying property.
Okay.
So, that's a lot of saturation.
Yeah.
Anymore, uh...
Well, that's pretty much the saturation, then, I mean, if it's all wrapped around, right? Because of all these, that it is basically totally wrapped around.
And, I, I mean, you know, for me, I look at Eucalyptus, there's seventeen, this would make eighteen, this would bump it to thirty-eight percent of the homes on Eucalyptus are approved for transient rentals, which, that's with, this would, you know, we're approaching forty percent. That seems like an impact to a neighborhood, and once again, I will say that I think there are too many transient rentals on the flats.
This one's interesting because it's clearly saturated, but nobody objected to it, probably because it's got a lot of vacation rentals, and that's sort of what you expect on that street.
There's nobody to...
Right, it's, and the other kind of neat thing is, this has got two long-term rentals and one short-term, so it really, for some reason, this one makes more sense.
Well, um, I would just note that what the saturation criteria is, is will a year-round resident be surrounded by, will, will a year-round resident be surrounded by, um, transient occupancies? So it's not just the saturation, what, what you're looking at is what the rules currently say is, is there a year-round resident that lives there full-time that's gonna be surrounded by transient occupancy? That's what the rule is.
See, actually, this one is, you've got, you've got two tenants in there already. So if the transient renters are causing a problem for the tenants, this is gonna cause a problem for the landlord. The landlord's gonna have to sort it out. That's the best scenario you have. When you have someone that's gonna manage the property, and this is not a VRBO or something like that, where there's no one present, there's no one on the island, when there's a company sitting there backing it up, taking the complaints at two in the morning, or whatever it is, it makes a big difference. It would, I would think, who, this owner, that, um, if it was approved and he had a problem with it, that it may change back to a year-round rental because his two other tenants would have a problem with it, and that's where he's collecting his rents as well. So, I, I, I see this one as, as a little different as well.
I'm sorry, sir, how long have you owned it for?
Two and a half years.
You redid the whole property as well? You redid this whole unit as well?
Uh, we've done improvements to the other units, yes, but, uh, this one, we did extensive work. It was, uh, built in nineteen...
He needs to go to the microphone.
Oh, could you come up to the microphone?
Yeah, it was, it was built in nineteen twenty-four, and a lot of it was original. So when we got in and you, you take off the, you know, you think you're gonna paint and carpet, and you get in, you go, oh, no.
Oh, yeah, welcome to Avalon.
It has a lot of layers, yeah.
We went back several times to the planning department and said, "Well, what do you think? Uh, you need to take that out." So, from plumbing to electrical to windows to siding to insulation to flooring to roof, I mean, that's what we had to do.
When you come out, will you stay in this property?
No, we have, uh, well, our family will. We, we have, uh, my wife and I have seven kids and now eleven grandkids, and they all love Catalina, and, uh, six of our kids that are now married, three of them have their honeymoons here, and they grew up here with, uh, my dad's house up on upper terrace, and so, uh, about a year ago, we bought a house on, uh, middle terrace. And so, uh, there's, uh, a lot of us that are coming back and forth, so we'll use the Eucalyptus short-term rental for our family, and that's why we like the short-term rental part of it, because then there's times during the year that we can use it, and it's not requiring a renter to move out because they're not there.
You won't be using it, though, but members of your family could.
Well, we may, you know, I mean, but most likely it'd be our, our...
All right, so let me, let me, because this is the other rule, so I got, I'm all about the rules today. This is, okay? So the other rule is, if, if the, if you're gonna be, if the owner occupies the unit, then there's a presumption that it should be granted. The other rule, which wasn't applicable in the last case, but may be applicable in this case, where the subject property of the CUP contains multiple units, that's one instance, or the applicant owns other separate properties in the city which are utilized for year-round rental, if either of those things happens. In other words, if it contains multiple units, or the applicant owns other separate properties which are utilized for year-round rentals, the planning commission should approve the application in the absence of negative findings. So, I think, applying that to here, because the subject property contains multiple units in the absence of other negative findings, the planning commission should approve the application. Again, that's what the rules say. So, the negative findings would be impact on the neighborhood.
And saturation.
Yeah. Oh, that's the same, uh, nine-dash-eight-point-four-oh-four-D-three.
Thank you. Anyone else like to discuss?
Well, I, I feel sorry for Eucalyptus, you're more than Clarissa. I mean, that is, it, it is just party street, and it's, what, are there five year-round residents or something? There isn't no Halloween on that anymore. And I do remember it as a place where teachers would live and people rented for the winter and/or year-round. It had a lot of, you know, year-round worker bees, because they were, you know, kind of the lower-end units, and now it's just like, might as well be Hamilton.
Well, I don't think that's a bad thing, so...
Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
All second? Call for vote?
Commissioner Hall?
No.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
No.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, item number five.
I have to excuse myself, because I live too close.
Oh.
Living over...
Can I just sit there?
Okay.
If I was supposed to...
I think...
Can I sit in the audience? How's that go?
So, let's, hang on.
Yeah.
So, you're recusing yourself because you live too close, and you're not gonna comment on this item, or are you?
Correct.
Okay, so you're out.
Right.
You live, or no?
I'm also supposed to be recused because I am too close, but I, I still can't stay and listen and make no comment.
If you're gonna comment...
Do you, do you, wait, hang on.
Wait.
Do you own a property or do you lease?
I own.
Own, okay. So, the rule is, if you own a property that is within the...
Right.
Golden circle, let's just call it.
Okay, right.
Okay. That you can stay and watch only if, only if you address the commission as the public speaker to talk about the impact on your property. If you're not gonna make a public comment, you have to recuse yourself. But if you're gonna make a public comment about how it affects you personally, you can stay and you can make a public comment. That's the, that's the, I call that the Bruce Furtig Rule, because he was able to speak up on Vons, even though he lived really close to it, because he talked about the impact of his property.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
If Eric says he got one, then I would have gotten one, but I'm...
All right, so, and Denise is leaving because she believes she's within three hundred feet. So we're, we're losing, we're dropping people left and right. Okay.
Okay.
How many we have left? One, two, three, four, five?
We have a sufficient quorum.
Yeah, you need three votes. There you go. Okay, next one.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, no, you're blinder than I am. Okay, item number five. Two-five-seven East Whitley, Unit A, conditional use permit for transient rental. Project description: Request for approval of a conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room or rooms with or without table board in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than thirty consecutive days duration transient rental, dash, section nine-dash-six-six-zero-three of the Avalon Municipal Code at two-five-seven East Whitley, Unit A. The recommendations from staff, based on the preceding discussion of the proposed project's compliance with the applicable principles and standards of the Avalon Municipal Code, the proposed use will not jeopardize, adversely affect, endanger, or otherwise constitute a menace to the public health, safety, or general welfare, or be materially determined detrimental to the property or other persons located in the vicinity of such use. Therefore, staff recommends, number one, the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under section one-five-three-zero-five of the state SEQA guidelines. Number two, that, that the planning commission adopts resolution number nineteen-dash-zero-nine approving a conditional use permit and coastal development permit for the operation of transient rental at two-five-seven East Whitley, subject to the attached conditions of approval, including that a vehicle may not be provided to the transient guest. I'm gonna open this up to the public. Would anyone care to discuss this item?
Hello, Matthew Sullivan from two-five-seven East Whitley.
Hi, Matt.
I'm here to answer any questions.
So...
And just for clarification, I'm sorry, the rules that we've been talking about, do you, um, do you reside in this unit full-time?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be a unit that...
Pardon me?
So, you would be, sometime of the year, you'd be leaving and letting people...
Yes, I typically stay in the, in this unit that we're talking about, about two to three days a week.
Okay. Again, so the, just to remind everyone, the rule says that where the property is the, well, no, it's, it's, it's not the only unit, though, you own other units, right?
I'm sorry?
You own other units? You own three units?
I, three units, I own the, the...
Three units on the...
The property that has three units in it. I'm sorry, I can't hear very well.
Okay, got it. Then, then the rule is, where the subject property contains multiple units...
Yes.
The planning commission should approve the application, absent other negative findings for the CUP.
So, in the other two units, do you, that you currently have up there?
Yes, I currently have two long-term, um...
Year-round rentals?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you use this one yourself when you're in town, obviously.
Pardon me?
And you use this one yourself when you're in town, obviously.
Yeah.
So, a third to half of the week, basically, if you're saying two, three days a week.
And then I, um, uh, when I, if, if, uh, my other family members come over and they want to use the top unit where I typically stay in, I have an additional room downstairs with my employee who is living in the bottom floor, and, um, and so we'll use that space there, and in the meantime, we have a renter in the, in the middle floor all the time.
I've, I've seen your properties, and absolutely beautiful.
Oh, thanks.
I mean, some of the nicest properties on the island, inside and out. Um, I remember going through it about a year and a half ago. Um, so the housing you are providing is top quality, for sure.
Well, thanks.
I remember it before you did.
It was unbelievable.
And it was a tear-down.
It was.
Yeah.
In fact, a fire hazard.
I've offered, or I've, 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 I've offered two long-term rentals, um, for the city, um, you know, forever, and, uh, compared to there hadn't, wasn't anything before.
Right.
And, um, and so, we're doing this hoping that we could, uh, buy out our partner and be able to retire here. Right now, it's just, um, the arrangement that we've had, um, he's had several, um, they have three partners, my fifty percent partner has three partners, and their family and all their friends and all their business associates have been coming over quite a lot. And, uh, we're just not into it anymore, because Chan and I are maintaining it all. And, um, so, we, uh, we're hoping that we'd be able to get this CUP to help us offset, um, some of the costs and be able to, um, get them out of it, and then, uh, keep it for ourselves. So...
Thank you.
That's our goal.
Thank you, Matt.
I appreciate, Matt, the, the use of the house for numerous events that, you know, earned money and, you know, helped candidates, or just was, you know, a...
Yeah, and it's been nice to be part of the community and give as much as we can to everybody, come and hang out. So it's been fun. We'd like to keep doing it if we could. So this'll help. Otherwise, we kinda have to move on and, and, um, and sell it, so, it's kind of a critical thing for us.
Thank you. And it's really nice to hear that the last two applicants are, have created year-round housing.
Yeah. I've also, um, spoke with several of the neighbors that are close by. Cliff Hague has, uh, supported us, and also Charlie Camby, and Marina, um, who's next door to Cliff.
Belcito, yeah.
And also Lourdes and Adrian, which are right below us, and Lynn Cameron, and also Mary Stein and Randy, um, are all behind it, so...
Well, that's wonderful to hear.
So far, I haven't had anything negative, but, you know...
And this is not on the flats, right?
Pardon me?
Just for the record...
This is not on the flats.
What's that?
Not in the flats, it's, it's up on the hill.
It's up on the hill.
He's with me.
So that would be the only mitigating factors, that you have to have a golf cart.
Pardon me?
You have to have a golf cart to get up there.
No, there's no golf cart. No golf carts are, are allowed with the, with, with transient units.
No, we were, our plan was to have...
So he can't, you can't lend, he can't rent that out, or it can't go with the property.
No, it's, our plan was to have vouchers for our guests, for a taxi.
Oh, okay.
So, um, it, it's a, it's a heck of a hill, and so, that's, we just...
Easy to get down, wouldn't be fun coming back up.
Are we good?
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Anyone else in the public would like to comment on this? No? I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm gonna open it up for discussion. Anyone like to discuss this item or make a motion?
Um, since it's nowhere near saturation, and it has plenty of room behind it and in all sides, and I'm sure that the quality of the house will command a quality of renter that is going to take care of things, and price probably also, but I just, you know, it, you should have whatever you want, the way you guys did that. You, you re, you reused recycled materials, the pillars are the original, the cedar floors, the windows, I mean, it's just really, you know, beyond the pale of taste and design.
And you had a lot of vision, because I too saw it before you purchased it.
And it was in a bad, tough, tough way. Oh, risk-taking, for sure.
And I appreciate the creation of year-round housing.
Too, yeah.
Too, where there was none, that's...
Well, there's the difference between some of the stuff on the flats, because, uh, they had the ability to create something, because it, it's hard to vote yes for me on some of these things on the flats, and, and when it's that, oh, well, we spent nine-hundred-thousand, well, yeah, but then, everything else is, we've, the whole atmosphere is bad, which is why we really do need to do something about...
However, we are not, we're not able to make a, make a, make a vote on financial...
I, I just...
Hardship.
I didn't say that, I said, yeah, that, yeah, that, that's something, and, and we do have to do something to make it more...
Correct.
...equitable or anything else to, to cha, I mean, well, uh, I'll save that for the discussion later, but it's, it's hard to vote yes on some of these, it really... discussion later, but it's, it's hard to vote yes on some of these, it really is, but that's the deal.
It's tough.
Those are the rules, you have to go that way. This one's not hard to vote on, although I will say somebody asked me to talk about how steep it is and the fact that there's not gonna be a golf cart rented with it, but if people come and party or this or that and the steepness of East Whitley, so. No, I was, that was, somebody, a couple of people said that to me, to bring that up, to just mention that that was a concern because of the steepness of East Whitley. And a concern about the golf carts or guests coming and partying and then leaving, you know.
Rolling back into.
Rolling back into.
Yeah, literally.
Rolling down.
Or through the city's property.
At the end of the street.
No, well, in case you don't know this, probably you'll even, but the trash truck went through there a couple of times.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna drop that trash truck down there.
So is there any motion?
There's, anybody like to make a motion?
I would like, against all my prejudices, make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Call for vote. I was so in shock. I was so in shock.
Commissioner Glass, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Oh, you should have voted no, just for.
Okay.
Now we got a roof.
Um. Item number, oh, hold on, let's go get everybody. Oh, huh, oh.
Amanda, take your fine time to be gone.
Everyone's got their bug.
Yes, and it's hard, but you know, it's like if they.
Your house has happened.
The thing is, I don't know.
Yeah. Everything's aimed to vote.
Well.
But I mean, they have done something like that.
You hang a walkaway, too?
Just for the appearance of conflict.
Uh, we don't want any of that going on.
Yeah, they have, I mean. There's other variables that they've done in the past.
Some meeting going on in conference rooms.
You know, there's.
Paul stepped in to go with that.
They were snapped. Shut down in twelve weeks and years. You know, there's all sorts of, there's other variables, and some of these people, we say we wanna use it, you know, part of the year. That's good, too.
That's good.
You know, I got one, one.
Chairman, I do have a letter to read before you start, the staff report.
And actually, and then I've got one monthly grant.
A letter?
I rent all winter, and then in the summer.
This is for the Eddie Vega.
There's a weekly grant that allows you to keep the.
Okay. Number seven?
All righty.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
I don't see Alex.
I'm gonna ask. Yeah, I know. So Micah, you got, what are you gonna do on this one?
Oh, this is number seven?
Yeah.
I overaccused myself.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yes, go away.
Put it on the record, dog. Yeah, well, he lives right next door with Aparence. What?
Doesn't own the property?
Yeah, but he, yeah.
Appearance of impropriety.
Appearance, appearance. Okay.
I can, I just don't know if I should.
Who's the guy sitting in the back there with Sidney Betty?
Okay. He's a, um.
Yeah.
He's a resident?
No, no, he's talking about, uh, Zeller.
Oh, she's here for.
Oh, he is Zeller. He's an old resident.
I know who he is, okay.
Yes, yes, exactly.
He's a very, he, she, the family's been here since the damage has.
Nice, nice.
Yeah, he was, he's at the council meeting last night.
Yeah.
He was?
Like, that's how I interpret it.
Yeah.
Because he's coming to.
Coming back to the house.
He wants to just get ketchup and do more evolve.
Nice. Well, he's working with Eddie on this.
Yeah, that's what, he's gonna be the contractor.
Yeah, well, they'll, they'll.
All right. What, what?
I thought you were going in. What's going on? I thought you were going.
We lost our recording.
Guess who said bye, huh?
Hang on.
What's happening?
Put the city ad online website, look at us. Right?
Oy. I don't wanna. So that, do they want us to start passing these out to our friends? These be, this beautiful.
They did do a good job, but they did, it was kind of, it was kind of dicey, I was gonna say, they, I don't know.
Well, there's, you know, for all the people that came to me and said they didn't wanna do, they didn't want it, nobody was here, so whatever.
I said, it's a giant.
Are we on TV?
It's a yard on top of the house.
Are, I'm hearing.
No, it's not. Yeah, I know, you know.
Were we on break?
We don't know what's happening.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to the website right now, seeing where it's.
Good luck with that.
Oh, my God, my hair, my head's glaring again. Where's the powder?
Are we on, Alex? Are we good? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, we're back on. Item. Item number six.
I'm gonna recuse myself on this one.
Can you state the reason?
Uh, to any appearance of impropriety.
To avoid an appearance of impropriety, he lives right next door to the unit.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so this, uh, project is at three, twenty Metropole. Site plan and coastal development permit to add two roof decks to a multi-unit residential structure. A public hearing for a site plan and coastal development permit to renovate the exterior of a multi-unit residential structure to add two roof decks. The recommendation of staff regarding this application, based on the preceding discussion of the proposed project's compliance with the applicable principles and standards of the Avalon Municipal Code, the recommendation is, one, the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under section one, five, three, zero, one, E, one of state SEQA guidelines. Two, the planning commission adopts the findings to support approval of the coastal development permit, including the finding that the project location is not within the three-hundred-foot appealable zone. Number three, the planning commission adopts the findings to support approval of the site plan with the attached list of conditions. Okay?
And then just for the record, 'cause the findings for the site plan are not in the staff report or in the conditions, so I'll just, just go over them for you. Approval or disapproval of any site plan shall be based on the following three factors. This is, uh, section nine dash eight point two, oh, three of the municipal code. A, every use, development of land, and application of development standards shall take place in compliance with, uh, the zoning code. Uh, every use, development of land, and application of development standards shall be considered on the basis of suitability of the site for the particular use or development intended and the total development, including the application of development standards. The property, the site shall be arranged as to avoid traffic congestion, ensure the protection of public health, safety, and the general welfare, and prevent adverse effects on neighboring property owners, and shall be in general accord with the elements of the general plan. And lastly, every use, development of land, application shall be considered on the basis of suitable, of the suitable and functional development design, but will not be, uh, intended to make you, uh, act as an architectural commission. In other words, you don't look at the color or the beauty of it, it's just, is it suitable, and is it a suitable development in design? We can talk, we, you, about whether we need an architectural commission, which I know is one of the future study sessions.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And I always appreciate your information. Um, I'm gonna open.
My voice is gone now for the rest of the night, so.
Oh, Rocio would like to read a, a letter from a neighboring, uh, uh, property owner regarding this, um, item on the agenda.
It had stated, March seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Dear Denise Ready and City Manager, City Manager. My name is Paulette Cottle, and I own the property at three, eighteen Metropole. I recently learned that my neighbor Eddie Vega is requesting permission to add two decks to his structure at three, twenty Metropole. I was told I should contact you with my concerns, because the meeting is Wednesday, three, twenty. I am emailing this and sending you a letter in the hopes that one or two will be read in the time. As a tra, as a project was described to me, it will block a substantial amount of light to my building and encroach on the privacy of all my tenants. Also, with a reduction of light comes an increased probability of mold and mildew. I am even more concerned with the noise this could generate. My building has three floors and all the bedrooms are located on his side of the building. It is my firm belief that this will adversely impact all of our quality of life. I also worry about the adverse effect on my property value. I hope you will go look at the property and questions before you vote. Don't take my word for it, please go look for yourself. I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration. Ms. Paulette, who resides at three, eighteen Metropole.
Okay, thank you, Rocio. I'm gonna open up to the public. Would anyone care to speak on this item on the agenda? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
David Zeller with Zeller Construction, number five, Cabrillo Drive, and I'm here to represent the applicant.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Is it?
For David Zeller?
Is it possible to have a privacy deck, uh, on the side of the neighbor who is, who wrote the letter and block off, um, so the bedrooms are not affected by the views or?
How do you mean privacy? Build a wall around the deck?
Well, is the deck open? Is it?
There's a, a normal railing around it.
Uh-huh. And there wouldn't, you couldn't fill that in, in some way?
I presume we could do some sort of mitigation for sound, or if that's a concern, it might, if they're concerned about light, it might impact that in that way.
What's the, do you, I mean, I know this is far-fetched, but I can't see it in anything that's here. The distance between the neighbor up and the neighbor down is how, what's the, what is, I mean, I'm just listening to what the neighbor said.
On the uphill side.
I'm sorry?
There's no impact on the neighbor on the uphill side, but the neighbor on the downhill side, that it's probably ten to fifteen feet away from the, their house. Yeah, it's quite a ways away.
Okay. That's, that was my question, I mean, the writing letter, but they don't give us a distance or a, to say, 'cause we can't really say that blocking a view or, you know, a light, that's, I mean, that's not.
Light, it's, it's, and the building that's closest to them is actually lower than their house. And then their, Ed Noodle's, um, building is two levels, so on the uphill side, it's much higher than the downhill side.
Okay.
Mr. Zeller, they're asking for you to speak closer to the mic, if somebody's.
Okay, is that better?
That's exactly. I've got a question. It looks like you're just shaving, or you're taking off the pitch of the roof, the gables, and making it a deck.
That's correct.
So.
There's, there's no change in height whatsoever.
But it looks like there's no yard anywhere, so this will be the yard.
Correct, there'll be some outdoor space.
Yeah.
Which is the intent.
Okay.
Are there dogs involved?
In what way? Hauling material up?
Barking dogs on decks as, as people walk by and that kind of thing?
I don't, have no idea.
Eddie, do you have dogs? Oh, okay. Thank you. Do they bark?
They're dogs.
They're dogs, uh-huh.
They're small dogs.
Oh, even worse, they bark more.
Yeah.
Is there, um, in, in the requirements, it's, um, a condition that they get this engineered, correct?
We, we're in discussion with architect and engineer before any building permits.
Okay.
So this is really an approval in concept, and then once we.
'Cause anything.
If we get approved for the decks, then it's an old building, so we.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of my main concerns, is that it's pro, all the permitting's done correctly and all the engineering is, uh, signed off by a licensed engineer. This is important.
Yeah, that's, once there's a, a plan developed structurally for the decks, we obviously are gonna need to get engineers and plans and then get those approved with the Building Department and the inspector.
So there are two standard conditions, and I'll just read them.
Okay.
Uh, all plans and specifications must be approved by the City of Avalon Building Department prior to construction beginning, which means they've gotta bring everything that we asked for, for them to do. And then the other condition is, um, if there's any pre-existing municipal code violations at the property, in other words, if there's something going on that they haven't, um, done the right way under the municipal code, um, they would have to resolve them prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. So it's a way of also going into the property and making sure that everything else is done appropriately.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone have any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, anyone like to discuss this project? Have any questions with the commission?
I could understand why it's in the room when there's absolutely no room around that house. There's no yard, there's nothing.
And I, I, I'm, I think it's gonna make the property look.
Better.
Better.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
My only thing is, I, is it's exactly what, um, the structural issue of it.
Yes, that's important.
And if there's engineers involved, and I'm what yours, yeah, right.
So it would stand on steel stilts.
The way that the engineer is gonna.
Yeah.
Think that it has to be, there's probably certain codes he has to abide by.
You can, you can, if you wanna modify that condition, all plans and specs must be approved by the, the City of Avalon Building Department and, um, specifically approved by the city engineer.
I, I would like to make that a condition. Isn't that?
I mean, I, I wouldn't pick on this building any more than any building that's gonna get.
Not that it's an older building?
I mean, they're all older buildings. As soon as they start digging into it.
Well, he's not gonna build a deck, too, that's gonna fall down the next day.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that would be Mr.'s, in Mr. Zeller's best interest to have it be.
But it, it'll at least be submitted by an engineer.
Whatever the building code.
He'll live in the building code, which is, tends to be overfill. Anyway.
Looks like an improvement to the property.
I was under the impression that when you do that on top of a building, that you have to have it structurally engineered.
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't know where I.
I think whoever looks at this is gonna look at the weight they're removing and the weight they're adding and what's there.
It's gonna have to be approved by the Building Department.
Right.
Which means that.
It will be required.
Terms that you need calculations and, you know, whatever, then it's gonna be denied until, until they make it right.
Okay.
Um, I will tell you that previous approval that you did on another property, um, where you required engineering done, um, the engineering didn't come out quite the way we thought it was, and they have to re-engineer it. Which is, that's what was on the agenda for last night's council meeting, and it got pulled.
I know.
So it was caught.
Okay. Well, I think this is great.
Not caught, it was discovered. Caught sounds like you're trying to get away with something. I'm just trying to be even-handed here.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve.
I second it.
I, could, we, could I just ask about conditions of, of noise at this point?
We have a.
Tend to be noisy.
After motions, you can make a discussion.
Oh, okay. Because I have heard from the neighbors that there, the dogs are a problem. And there will be, you know, parties and, and it is cramped in that place. So, anything that they could do to mitigate the privacy of the neighbors whose windows are the bedrooms that they look in might be nice.
Well, there's a noise ordinance, and if dogs are barking, call the city and they'll send code, or call the sheriff's department, because there's a municipal code for, for that. I know I've had a call on my neighbors before. But as far as the privacy.
This was done up at the, for the stone with Pete Edwards, and he, he put, decided he would cover the, the, between the deck posts so that, I think it was Diane Stone, was not, her bedroom wasn't right there at eye level.
Eddie, can you, Eddie, yeah, and state your name, state your name.
Edmundo Vega, 320 Metropole. My house is between La Paloma and vacation rental properties around, so in a way, so there is a lot of noise in the way. So, that's, if it's a discussion of the noise.
Vacation rentals.
Yeah, I did, I did, well, I did walk up, and La Paloma is like, right, if there's like a long fence, and then you look down and there's La Paloma right next, that goes all the way down. And then I did notice the building that you referred, that the letter came from. One of those units is vacation rentals up top.
And there do a lot of noise in it.
Yeah. So, but just, just for the record, if there are people that have problem with noise.
Yeah, there are year-round renters also.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, call for vote?
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight, because we already did seven. I'll wait for the other commissioners to.
To chub that. Wait, wait.
All here? Okay, I'll just kinda lead this off, because Amanda's not here.
Thank you.
So the council directed the planning commission to look at several things with, associated with CUPs. Some of them are in this memo, some of them would, we can't do everything at once, so there's other things. So the ones that we're talking about on this memo are saturation, in other words, do you wanna change saturation standards? Right now, as we went through earlier, they're kind of squishy. And so, we can beef them up, or we can eliminate them, or we can put some standards in them. Again, it's just a starting of discussion. The second item is to change the nature of the permit. And what is specifically discussed in this particular memo is revising the municipal code that would, basically, you'd set forth the standards in the municipal code, and then, in certain areas of the city, you would allow these as a matter of right, ministerial permit. In other words, you file an application, there's no public hearing, you get it over the counter. Santa Monica has something like that, where there's, there's not, you know, the public coming.
Anybody who comes within would be able to get.
Within the standards set forth in the code, gets one.
Okay, so that's the ministerial.
That's the ministerial one.
She explained, she calls it like, check the box.
Check the box.
You have a, a listing of things that make it worth, that you have to do, okay.
No neighbors.
And no neighbors. Now, she said the neighbors are notified, but there's no opportunity to object. So that's the ministerial permit. And so, you can talk about whether you, you wanna go there. What is not discussed in memo, although, although it's briefly, briefly discussed, and we can discuss it at another meeting more in detail, are changing the nature of the permit to make it a license. And what the memo provides is, if you do that, you take, you basically take the process that you have right now, you take it out of the planning code, you put it into a business license code, okay? And you make it a license. The reason you would consider doing that is that it doesn't run with the land. So it's only a license to the person that's standing in front of you applying for it. You're looking at that person and saying, "I'm gonna take care of my property this way. I'm not doing this to increase the value of it, to sell it to someone else." Because if it runs with the land and they sell it, you don't have the opportunity to meet with the applicant, talk with the applicant, understand what's going on. So the nature of changing it into a license would be it stops running with the land.
So, I have a question.
And, and that's not discussed in detail in the memo, but that would be, if you wanted to discuss that and how that would work, and what kind of limitations, you can make a license for five years, 10 years, until the person changes. We can have that discussion, but that's just another option other than the ministerial. And then another thing that we can discuss at the next meeting is whether you wanna amortize them, which is basically saying that for the existing ones, you can only use them for another 10 years. And after that, you have to reapply, whether it's for a conditional use permit, a new one, or whether you change it to a license. And then, you know, you have to reapply and you just get a license. The issue there is, property owners will say, "Well, you're taking something away from me. I've got this thing that runs with the land right now, and now you're reducing my right, and you can't do that. It constitutes taking." And so there's a challenge there to doing the amortization, but we can discuss that if you want to. And then the last thing that Amanda talks about for this on the agenda tonight is the housing impact fee. And that is a two-step process. The first process is, and I think the concept behind a housing impact fee is that when you grant a conditional use permit for transient occupancy, you are impacting negatively the long-term housing, or the year-round housing in Avalon, and that constitutes an impact. So one, we have to come up with a study to actually show that that's the case. And then if that is the case, if there is, we can find that there's a nexus between granting CUPs and the reduction of year-round housing, then you can impose a fee, a mitigation fee, which basically what it would do is you'd impose a fee on someone who has these, it would go to a special fund that the city sets up for the development of the housing that you're losing. In other words, the development of long-term housing. And you can do that through, you know, either having enough money, eventually built up to buy homes, or, you know, rental assistance to help people if the rents are too, too high, and they can't afford long-term housing, you could have a rental program, whatever that, but you have to, you know, you'd have to establish what the program, and then you may have to get that fee, depending on how it turns out, I may have to go to the voters or the council would do it. But there's gotta be some, there's a, a process of actually adopting the fee. So it's, one, is there a nexus? You gotta do a study, do CUPs hurt long-term? And if you find that, then you go to the next phase is, what kind of fee do we wanna have to help the diminishment of long-term housing? So those are the three things to discuss. This is your meeting, so I'm not getting on the 730 boat, I'm here all night. So, there's no timeline.
So, are we tackling all of them?
You're tackling these three tonight. Unless you. Saturation is the first on the list.
It should be the first.
No, I don't think so, because I'd rather start from the top. Saturation can become sort of, some sort of a condition or whatever, I mean, but saturation, as it stands now, you, you pay attention to it, but it doesn't, it doesn't rule anything.
That's what I mean.
And I, and I'm totally against the administrat, anything that somebody can give over the counter. Some, if you're friendly with the guy who's giving it over the counter, it's a good deal. Or if somebody's at lunch and you get lucky, that's a good deal. But, you know, and then some of those things, if you wanna argue those things, you have to go to court. We could at least, with a public hearing, it's a better process. And, and we've got so much stuff, and there's a lot of garbage in, in this with all the conditions. I mean, instead of enumerating that we have to say, I mean, there's things in here that says the property should be infest, you know, free this and that, and you should have fire extinguishers. Well, you know, there's other ways to do that instead of loading that up. But I think it's, it's, we need to do something, but I, I'd rather start from the top, not with saturation.
I, I don't, I'm, in ministerial, it looks like a check the box.
Yeah.
And you get it.
But discretionary, it says, there is nothing about the license procedure that eliminates public input and notice and the ability to create a discretionary permit.
That's the license that we're not, that we don't have the big memo on? So, so, that's separate from the ministerial thing?
Yes, it's two different deals. But what's the problem with the discretionary? It, we don't, what, what?
Okay, no, I, I'm saying.
It's just two different things.
Right.
One is discretionary, one is ministerial.
Right.
But the ministerial, or the discretionary, does allow for public input, no? Or how does that work?
Yes, yes, the way, the way we would work it, one, right now, you can keep it the same, right? And it keeps in the, in the municipal code, in the zoning department, and it's handled as a land use entitlement. A land use entitlement means is that it goes with the land.
Right.
Forever.
Right.
Period. But, but you can change it, you can change that, and you can take it out of the zoning code. You could put it into the license code, which is what Santa Monica does. But they don't have public hearings. You could have it in a license and require a public hearing before the planning commission. You have the same procedures you have now, but it's a license, and that just means that it doesn't run with the land. So every time it changes hands with the owner, or after 10 years, they have to come back and reapply.
So that would go from set forth, or does that go back to the people that already have those permits?
That would only go forward. The only way to make the rules apply retroactively.
Because I know that's a huge concern.
Is to do an amortization, which we, we're not, that's not in Amanda's memo. But amortization basically says, after a reasonable amount of time, let's say 10 years, whatever, your use that you currently have is no longer, is no longer valid, because you've got your, the return on investment in your property, and you have to come back and reapply.
Now, is that, is that legal?
It's legal.
Taking it back from, I mean.
Well, it depends on the amortization period, how long it is, but it's always subject to challenge.
Yeah, because I, I find that being hard, here you go.
I have this right now, as a, runs with the land. It, it, it is an issue, it's legal, you, you can.
But it could cost the city a whole lot of money.
But, the other, the other thing is, which we haven't done yet, we were going to go over inactive CUPs. I mean, you have to move forward, the amortization, you move backward, there's a tremendous cost.
And unfortunately, Amanda's not here to discuss the efforts that we have been doing.
That's what I'm saying, if we, if we did that and kinda culled it, that got it down, we'd have much more to play with, and you could move forward more easily. And, you know, hey, I, I have a CUP, I only use it two months a year.
So let me just say this, because I don't have the information as to where we are on that. We've developed forms, we've developed the letters, I know they've been sent out. I don't know where we are in terms of compiling how that does. And so, again, this is the first of.
Many.
Several discussions, because these things have been, as you can see from the timeline, I mean, I've been here 10 years. We've gone to the council, I think, four times with this, and, you know, they, they make adjustments. It's always, it's my first council meeting ever, what are we new about CUPs? I totally remember that.
How many years have you been here?
Second item on the agenda was vehicles. What are you gonna do with all these dang vehicles?
Glad we got those figured out.
I know. So, so at the next meeting, we can bring back at least the update as to where we are.
Right.
I, I, because we've been waiting on that update.
For a loo. For like, before you guys were even on the commission.
And that seems to me to be one of the most important things to actually see.
To make these decisions.
That's it, but I'll tell you, she liked the, the Hugo's wanted to use it part of the time, this, that. The staff family has a CUP, limited to 12 weeks a year. That's how it was given to them. So in, that's, you know, there are conditions, yeah, it runs with the land, but you can condition it.
Make conditions of anything.
At least that is one theory that, that I've recently been going around and around with, with somebody who's a planning expert. So, that's, you can do things like that. The staffs were given a 12-week CUP. Yeah, it runs with the land, but that was one of the conditions, 12 weeks a year, period. But if we, if, if we got rid of some of those, the, I mean, for the people who buy a property just want a CUP for when they sell it, if, if we could cut those things down and the banked ones, if we could get rid of some of these, and like I say, I have one, I only use it two months a year. But that's because I rented the rest of the year to somebody all winter long. I rented basically, well, two and a half was, July, August, and part of September, gives me the money to keep my property up. But I don't rent it that long, if I lost that, whatever, it, it just gives me away. But I also do therefore provide nine months every winter to somebody. And so some of these things like that are if Matt wants, you know, if he's here part of the week, and, I don't know, and I would hope, or I would think that they might wanna manage that themselves to have more control over it, the quality and the upkeep. But you, you don't have to give somebody, it, it just, it was funny, because these, today, you know, just the, just the one of, of where they only want to rent it out part of the year, and not all year.
You're taking somebody's word for that, too.
I'm saying, well. No, I'm saying it's something you could have presented, I'm not saying you'd lay it on it, but actually, when the staffs got theirs, that was it. You either take, that's what we'll give you. And that, that became a condition.
I, I think, let me just go, go off on that. One thing that we may wanna do, again, is maybe one, one meeting we dedicate to going through, whatever you decide tonight, and then there's other things we're gonna talk about. But maybe we have one session where we just go through the actual conditions of approval.
That's what I'm saying.
One by one, and say, you can clean them up, is this right? You know, do, do these make sense? We can, we can, we can dedicate a night to that.
And that makes it much more workable. I really am against when, when it, you don't have, especially in this town, you know, there's, I think the public hearing is important. I mean, half of these owners don't live in this town, you know, as opposed to some other cities, where you're basically dealing with people who are in fact residents, who own rental property or whatever. But if we just cleaned our conditions up.
Let, let me just ask, is there any support on the planning commission to go to a ministerial system where you have set forth standards in the municipal code, and then the permit is granted over the counter, without a public hearing?
I think, what I think is, without knowing, to me, the problem isn't the process, the problem is the substance of the criteria that we're using to review.
Right.
So whether it's a ministerial, or whether it's a business permit, or whether it's a conditional use permit, I don't think our criticism has been that we have a public hearing and that it's a land use permit, and that it runs with, sometimes it runs with the land is a problem. But I think it's kind of the vague, what used to not be vague, but now is vague, criteria, because we've hammered this metal, in a sense, for so long, that I would hate to disrupt it by changing the process when we've refined the criteria, which is now apparently not adequate. which is now apparently not adequate, I would say, based on today's market because of bed and breakfast over the internet and all of that, that if we reviewed the criteria first and then kinda came up with something that we're comfortable with, either as a conditional use or administrative, or however it is, I mean, if we feel so rock solid that our new criteria is so good it could be done administratively, that would be the ideal situation.
No, that's only as good as the administrator, not as good as the system.
But right now, we know if we're not there, because we're-
But one of the questions is, I mean, I'm just gonna say what I understand, is that part of the problem, I mean, not part of the problem, s- some of the questions posed about, uh, conditional use permits is, is it, um, does it go with the sale of the house? If it is an entitlement, which is a conditional use permit, then it, it, you cannot deny that that goes forward without setting yourself up for a discrimination thing.
Well, okay, so if, if it's a, if it's a CUP, if it's a conditional use permit-
Right.
That is a land use entitlement.
And it goes with the property, period. So that's one of the problems with keeping it as a conditional use permit. If you, not problem, it's one of the items of concern, it can be considered.
Turning it to a license.
And that's one we, we don't see because it's being argued in a different realm. But it doesn't come before the planning commission because it just carries on as far as I can tell.
Well, I, I, I will say this, just again, because I've been here 10 years now, and I've seen this. You have had instances where people come and applying for a CUP and then sell the property right after.
Well, in fact, we denied one-
Because, because they're saying that it's gonna increase my-
Right.
Two meetings ago, and that, that was what their plan was.
We, we approved a duplex, we made changes to it, we did, we con- minimized it basically, and they wanted a, a CUP, and they're both on the market, what, one sold, I don't know.
But that's not, but that, but that's not-
Those were-
Those were denied, but it wasn't denied because it was on the market, because that's not in the municipal code saying we have it denied. Yeah, it was just a-
But no, but I think that, but I think we knew, at least in my mind-
Yeah, but you can't do anything about it because it's, it's, it's part of it.
No, there's ways to do it.
You know, and I guess that's the discussion we need to have.
Well, that's one, that's one discussion.
Is that fair?
Can I, and then can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I just, so I just wanna make sure, because I don't wanna, I wanna eliminate any hysteria that may come about regarding discussions on this topic. Whatever is in place, is in place, it is not, nothing that has already happened. No conditional use permits that have been given will change in any way, shape, or form if we were to make a change down the line.
Correct. The only, the only change, the only change, only change, is if you said we're gonna adopt an amortization period, which means after a certain number of days or years, you lose your permit, you have to reapply again.
Okay.
But, but-
You would have to amend your code, you'd maybe be subject to lawsuits, people saying that, you know, hey, I have this property right, but it's been, it's been done, you know?
But it, it could cost the city so much money.
But I just wanna make it perfectly clear that if you have one now, unless we were to adopt something like that-
Which is risky.
Which is risky, nothing will change for those of you or anyone that has one now.
No.
The other thing I would say, and I know this is a little bit goofy, but I'll never forget watching, um, something else that happened. When these things come up for discussion with the city, it usually becomes like an issue of, like, and people overreact, and we get, and I know that's not us, that's council, to talk about, just saying, a moratorium, to say, till we get, till we have this discussion, and we could set, I don't know, can we set a time period on it? Can, I mean, not us, but the city council, can, and also, it would be impetus for us to do what needs to be done for revision of what's in place.
When we did that with vehicles, everyone immediately slammed in to get a new vehicle.
Well, when we didn't do it, on the, on the puesto.
When, when you talk, start talking about moratoriums, the first thing that you're gonna do is the next meeting, you're gonna send applications on the gazoo for the CUP.
Well, no, 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 and I agree, I totally agree. But what I'm saying is, I'm saying this because it was exactly what happened. And Councilman Olson said it at the meeting, if we don't set a moratorium on cars, it's gonna be a, a barrage, and they didn't, and it was. So it's just a, a matter of timeliness, and so I'm just saying that, and I'm, I mean, whoever's listening, if anybody's listening at this point, and they wanna run down here and apply, spend the $2,700 or whatever.
All, all I will say is this, the only thing is this, that is, the moratorium issue is for the council to decide because they'd have to amend the code, and in, in the 10 years that this has been discussed, it's been brought up many times, and there's-
They won't do it.
They won't do it, because you need, you need super majority, and it just, it just-
What is a super majority for?
For a moratorium, it's four fifths.
We work on what the problem is currently, and try to figure it out before we throw more monkey wrenches into it. I say we need, we need to know who's got active CUPs, what or not. These are things we've been asking for, for as long as I've been on this.
And I, I need to say something.
I think that's a stall tactic, I think it, I think without, I just think that we can do things to make this a less automatic, we have no choice but to approve these. I think we can tune up, but we have now, I don't, like, that, I know you have been asking for that, as have I.
And if we don't have the information in front of us, how are we gonna make any other decisions? And another thing also, when regarding the moratorium, I'm gonna put it out there with the vehicles. It all, we have a code, we have a process, there's a judicial system from, that starts from the top that we have to go through and abide by, these are law, these are rules, these are policies.
It's not certain cement.
The municipal code? No, it can be changed, but I'm saying, this is-
We have skews the phrase, you know what, around this for so long, give us the information.
And another thing-
Have the planning department go to work and give us the information.
And, and, and this is, another thing is-
We have it in the model.
Is, we've been asking for that, there's, there's protocol, people say they complain, they, you know, and if you don't, if they don't come in, people complain all over Facebook, they complain to us, you, I, I hear it all the time, I get it, CUPs, none of them come through the door, most of them that complain come through the door, and, and make a, there's a, there's a process. We can revoke any CUP if they don't comply, and we have to do our job to do that. And we, you know, the moratorium on the, the vehicles, well, I'm sorry, I see vehicles every day that are 2017, 2018 stickers that should be off the streets, those are enforcements. We start there and start enforcing the law and take, and taking away vehicles that aren't supposed to be on the street, citing and citing, I don't know, we start enforcing the process of bad CUPs, they'll get eliminated.
What do we look at?
I don't-
Managed, because here, here's the thing that comes up all the time, you have people that say, I'm managing this myself. There's no one here on the island, the maid is who they're gonna call for the complaint, the maid is not gonna come break us up at 2:00 in the morning, you know what I mean? Where with a management company, now they do.
Well, sometimes.
I, I, I take an issue with that, but, um, I don't, I, but I don't, I, I don't see, okay, just, I'm just saying right now, I mean, when I went and looked at the little signs in, from Clarissa, Descanso, Catalina, Ulyptus, and Sumner, there are 100 that have signs in the window. That, that can't tell us any more than that. They are advertising that they have a rental, but at this point in time, there are 100 of them. And I'm kind of getting the, uh, the feeling from you guys that you're saying, like, we should be making sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. I think that is an unreasonable, impossible task.
Why? We've got it on the books, they have to meet some criteria. We may be able to get rid of some of these things.
But, but, and are you saying that you wanna put the cart before the horse? Clean up everything we have before we tighten up what we could do? I don't agree.
To find out where we're at.
We need to know where we're at.
Look at it, Yuli.
Look at a street with all the saturation, but only five of them ran out, so how saturated really is it?
That's what we don't know.
That's what we don't know, you can't possibly answer that. You can have a sign in the window, but it never gets rented out. You could look at the, the public tax roll and say, hey, look, there's no tax coming in on this, this is not being used.
That's why we need to clean up to find out how many exactly we really truly have.
That's, I think, just the opposite.
Well, no, I'm saying it's, it's making it better from a point forward as opposed to trying to clean up what has already been. And I, I think when I'm looking at these different possibilities of how we take care of them, that it would be easier controlling them going forward than it has been with what we have.
Okay.
That worries me.
That's why we clean up what we've got so we can move forward.
Today, today we'll get a saturation map, we don't know how many of those are actually active. We have no idea, you're saying, oh my God, look, it looks saturated to me, it looks saturated to me. We have no idea of saying that's the case, because there may be CUPs there, but there may be no one renting it.
No, no, I, I agree.
They've just got it banked, or they're just holding it, or they're just using it themselves.
Well, let me, let me say this, because one of the, one of the things that we can, we can look at is you've got a street full of CUPs, you're, and you're, and you are saturated, you, you look at the saturation map, oh my gosh. Everything. And then you look at the, some of the CUPs, maybe, they may only be doing it one weekend a year in order to keep the CUP. And so one of the, one of the ask was, is to go through the list and determine one who hasn't rented within a year.
Because those automatically are supposed to move in.
No, they're not automatically, you have to come to the, so, 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 so there was a two-phase direction. One phase was, for those that haven't directed, or haven't rented in a year, send them a letter asking them to just give it up. Second thing is, for those that hadn't rented in a year, um, say that we're gonna revoke, we're gonna start the revocation process, you'd come before the planning commission. And so, planning department has been working on that. And then the third thing was, looking at the CUPs and determining from the income level how many times it was actually rented. For instance, in a saturated area, you could have a whole street full of them, but you may have a couple of them only being rented out one weekend a year in order to keep, because you gotta have, you gotta report taxes at least once a year. And so, direction was to find out, give some information as to how often these are done, to provide better information to know whether it's really saturated in terms of saturation in terms of entitlement, or saturation in terms of use.
So now, is that not just a matter of planning and financing?
Yes.
Mix into two, saying, here's the tax records, because I know every month, any vacation, when I was at my company now, we hand in a tax report, it tells you how many days it was rented, it tells you 12%, it tells you all that kinda stuff, and it's turned in every month, and then there's, there's people that don't do it at all, I'm sure. That's my point about managing, that's my point about people doing it themselves. Are we collecting the tax for it, or are we just driving underground? You see, I mean, you, it may be collecting money on it, doesn't mean they're paying the city a tax.
It, it, it just seems to me that we are not Santa Monica, and we are not Los Angeles, and we are not Pacific Beach, but we have a much smaller, um, I mean, it's a small, and, and I, I, I think we should be able to make things, I, I know you wanna clean it all up before, but I don't think it's, I just can't see how that's gonna be possible.
Well, if we don't start cleaning it up, every time we give one, if we cleaned up what we-
So, okay.
Well, like, to say if you don't use it.
So, but if we cleaned it up, then at least from this point forward, those that we have can be accountable.
That's what I'm saying, that's why we wanna clean it up.
I don't see that the two are mutually exclusive. Exactly.
We, we wanna clean it up.
So at the next meeting, I, I think there's direction, let me get, let me get direction from the planning commission. At the next meeting, there'll be an update from planning or planning and finance as to where we are in terms of analyzing the current CUPs, the length of them, the saturation, so we can come with some data for you to consider. Is that unanimous that we can?
Yes, please.
Okay, boom, okay, now, now, no, no, but having said that, the meeting's not over.
No.
Right? Yeah, so, what else?
So, moving-
Let's discuss the other things on this list, or other things that you wanna talk about. Because again, we're here all night.
One thing on the land use, um, was there a time when it was not in effect? The CUP was, did not go with the land? You could not sell one with the property, I mean, it was considered?
So basically, there may have been a period of time before the municipal code was adopted, where people were, were, where it was not illegal to do it, and that's what's considered a grandfathered use, it's a non-conforming use, and so, um, those, those people are grandfathered or grandmothered in, grandparented. I guess is now the correctly correct thing. So they are treated as if, as if they have CUPs.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but since 1988, or when her chronology starts, um, we don't know. I mean, I just remember, I remember Ricky Deegan wanting to sell his, his property, and it didn't have any neighbors on the top, it was way at the top of the hill, and he came in for a CUP because it increased the pro- value of the property, and he had no intention of living there or even keeping it. And that, I thought, well, that was some sort of turning point, that, you know, we didn't allow that before.
I, I will tell you, because we, we represent, we represent Malibu, we present, you know, West Hollywood, you were well in advance of any city in terms of the development of transient occupancy CUPs. Most cities, um, do not, do not have any regulations, it was, people were able to do it.
Free for all.
Um, it was free for all.
But now that's changing with Airbnb.
Now it's changing, the one difference that you have, which is different from some cities, is the coastal commission believes that CUPs are one method of letting people get access to the coast by providing additional vacation properties or additional opportunities for people to come and visit the coast. So the coastal commission is, is tilted in favor of, you know, allowing or requiring cities on the, on the coast to, to allow CUPs for transient occupancy.
Do they have a percentage of CUPs that could happen?
No, what the coastal commission did, they sent us a letter saying that they consider CUPs an increase in the use of land, um, because maybe there's more people using it, and therefore, because it's an increase in the use of land, they also asked us to get a local coastal permit. So now you see that every CUP, you also get a local coastal permit because we're increasing the public's use of, you know, land. And so, but, but they want, they want these, Pacific Grove, one of our clients, you know, coastal commission says, you know, you, you need to allow this to happen.
And now yet the tide could be turning like Manhattan Beach says, so there has to be an owner on the property before you can rent.
You can place reasonable conditions, and that's the conditions.
They're talking, some of those are to catch people who are doing ver- uh, vacation donors by rental, or, or Airbnbs. That's one of the reasons some of those are going in in cities.
Right, and, and again, those are the conditions that you put on them, you know, there, 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 there are really two issues, you know? What conditions do you wanna, no, what, what entitlement do you wanna give people going forward? Doesn't seem like there's much appetite for amortization, but going forward, what kind of entitlement for CUPs? Is it just a license? Is it, uh, you know, runs with the land, do you wanna cap the number?
Well, if, if you just, if you don't want it to run with the land, then we cannot give a CUP.
That's right.
No, it's, it's called a license, it's called a license.
Yeah, so, so let's move forward, because as Paula stated, on, you know, that we can't do anything behind, for, with the ones that are exist, so if we're here to move forward, then we need to talk about, let's move forward.
Well, I think that one dis- one big discussion that it has not been addressed is, if we keep it CUPs, then it runs with that land, but some people are not into that. And that is a point of contention.
No, but there are, look, they, it's a condition, it runs with the land, but it is conditional, and therefore you can put conditions on the CUP.
Well, but you can't put the condition on that it doesn't go with the sale of the house.
Yeah, that's-
You could, well, there, there are things, you, you can do things, but also, we've talked about trying to, to capture uh, people who are doing verbo and, and Airbnb. And if we're trying to capture them and bring them into the system, the sooner the better we get it together. So, if we're trying to pull them in, you were talking about the city doesn't make enough money. They need more income. Well, if we, if, when we analyze all these inactive CUPs, or the people that pir, pirated, if we pull them in, what are we gonna pull them in to? Because that's, you know, you could get online now. You even see ads in The Islander.
So, so let me just, let me address that. The city has hired a firm called Host Compliance. It's been mentioned at the council meetings.
Yeah.
And their job is to go to the internet and see
Yeah.
which people are, are advertising without, and, and then the remedy for that would be.
How hard is that?
And how long have they been doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's why we keep asking for results. All these things are going on, and we never get results.
In the city manager, you can talk about it.
We have two things going here. The first one I wanted to comment on was that in my bi-weekly meetings with the planning director, she has told me that letters have been sent out. I don't know where she is in getting those back, and those are ones that have not utilized their, um, CUP permit. On the other thing, our host compliance, the consultants that we hired a year ago, we are not renewing their contract. We do have a list for Airbnb, vacation rentals, whatever, that do not have a permit. They're being sent a letter, so they're gonna have to follow the process. They'll be before you for a CUP. Uh, the ones that have done it, that might have lapsed their business license, they're being sent something else. The ones that have not paid their tax to us, and then there will be penalties on that. So, there's three or four different types of letters that are going out to the ones that have been discovered by host compliance. I believe that Amanda is working on your request. I understand there's a frustration here. It's been a while, but from my.
I understand there's a lot of work to do.
There's a lot of work, and she has a lot of work in her department.
That letters have been, have gone out.
Thank you.
Denise, what's the procedure if you think there's a, a illegal rental going on? And, you know, you, you can't really prove it.
So, we can prove it if they found it on the internet, then we can find out.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the internet.
We can get reports saying.
Just word of mouth, somebody puts up a.
It's neighbors, it's neighbors tattling on other neighbors. We've had several instances where we have received letters from neighbors saying, you know, this person is operating a, a business or whatever. And we've gone to that, and we've done an investigation, and if we find out that they are, then, um, we say that you have to, one, cease and desist, you have to give us an accounting of what you've done, and you have to pay us the penalty. And until you get a CUP from the planning commission, knock it off. And, and oftentimes, though, the neighbors say that this person is doing it, and we go ahead and investigate, and they're not.
It could be a family's. But here's the thing, because I've had this happen in my office where people come in and go, I'm renting this unit. And I know darn good and well, this unit does not have a CUP. Get their name, get their phone number of the people that say they're renting. Not, because you could have a family member in there that you don't have never seen before, but these people are letting use now, and you're completely wrong. Or, but if you get their name and number, and they said they've rented it.
Well, the one across the street is really good. They have a little sheet they read, and it says, please, if anyone comes to the door and inquires, say you're a cousin.
That's great.
I mean, they actually go down.
Have you ever got ahold of something like that? Picture.
You know, cousin, you could be cousin twentieth removed, and that covers like eighty percent of people in the country.
So, the other thing is, let's not make it too difficult that we don't pull these people in. Because otherwise, only the law-abiding citizens are paying the taxes, and the others are getting away scot-free. And I gotta tell you, being in business, it sucks. I operate on a completely unfair playing field, because I got people doing it every day. They keep the tax money they, they collect. We have, we get grilled by everyone for what a legitimate business we're doing, and the people that are causing the problems are normally the ones that, there's no one here to respond.
But, but can I just, like, the, the thing about it is, is that you are correct on every level, that, you know, like, the city is not recouping taxes, it's not fair, you're trying to operate on the up and up. But I, I, I have to say, we're a, a, a city of, you know, maybe thirty-eight hundred people. There's only so many of, like, Denise can only do so much. And you can't, like, the more, the more regulations we impose on everything, the more the laws are, who, we all complain about it. Who's enforcing it? It's one of the biggest considerations when ordinances are passed or anything happens here. How are we gonna enforce it? You know, we just went through the street vendors thing, completely different issue, but, I mean, I thought, who's gonna run out there at eight o'clock in the morning and make sure that they didn't, that, you know, they're not late or early or whatever they're doing? And I just think that, well, what I'm trying to say is that I am not sure, and I wish we could discuss it with just automatically not saying, um, let's keep it CUPs. I'm, I'm willing to consider and would like to discuss the ministerial issues because then you could say, every year, this person has to not pay twenty-seven hundred dollars. They're coming in to get a license, but we wanna see the taxes they paid that year, and it would create a control year to year instead of this huge buildup that's impossible to rein in now.
But am I correct? You can still do that discretionary as a license, where you have to renew it after a certain number? You can still do that discretionary. You still have the hearing, but still do it as a license, where you have to say, every one year, five years, ten years?
What, what I would, just knowing the community, as I, as I've known the community, um, I would think that the community would support if it was a license. You still have a public hearing. And so, you still have the procedures, but if it's a license, you can make the license a limited term.
And it does not go with the land.
And it doesn't go with the land. The question, the question is, you don't wanna have a public hearing on each license once a year.
No.
Every year.
No, no.
But, but, you know, you'll be, that's, that's all you'll do. But, but you could, we, we could do something like, yes, there's, there's reporting requirements every year. It is, it will expire in a year automatically if you don't do X, Y, and Z. You know, you could easily do that rather than, because it's not a land use entitlement. A land use entitlement for the revocation of it requires a public hearing.
All right.
Whereas a license, you put conditions on it, you don't meet it, boom, you're done.
So, I have a question, because I know she was saying about the tax, able to look at the taxes.
Well, or any other condition you put on it. Do, do you have fires? I mean, I, now then, I'm sorry, I'm opening up another.
No, no, no. They're supposed to be audited, just like a hotel. And, and that's what I'm saying with taxes. How does the city do that with, like, if someone, like, I know I'm audited, and I just got audited, and I had to pull up all my information, my, you know, lots of information, um, to give to the city. Is that, how do you do that with individual?
They, they've done it. I got audited.
Yeah, I, I, I know that we have auditors.
So, we have.
And they, and they do a random selection of businesses where they audit. I, and I'm not, I can't say for certain how many CUP, CUPs they audit.
I got randomly audited, but, you know, that's the point. There's stuff on the books that we don't enforce, and, and some of it should be cleaned up.
I think the other thing is on the books.
Silly stuff, but I mean, there's, we do have, you know, like, this thing of all these safety things, and, you know, on the books, you're supposed to be able to, uh, if, you know, if you get a CUP, that somebody would go inspect the premises.
I think it's every three years. I think that's what.
Yeah, but, but nobody inspects anything. They don't do it.
See, so this is the whole point, like you were saying. And I've been saying this for years that I've been on here.
We don't have.
It's only as good as.
Well, but we don't have the manpower, the personnel, or the funds to be able to support that effort on, on an ongoing basis. I mean, that's the problem. So.
Well, maybe raising the fees is the possibility. I mean, there, there is a person on Euclidus that
that you can make.
Bought the house in nineteen forty, nineteen forty-five or something, and is making sixteen thousand dollars a month on a nineteen forty-five investment.
Well, you don't know, you don't know that.
But you can't do anything about that.
Well, I have no problem charging twenty percent on that.
But, no, 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 no.
If it were to go into a city.
But you can also say, once a year, you come in, you have to buy your, it says it in here somewhere. It says to the fact that you can make that part of a fee for one of those that pays for an inspection on a every-three-year basis or something to make sure that there's fire extinguishers and smoke alarms and stuff. So, you're paying somebody to specifically go and check it on a every-three-years or something. You can, you can create it, but now, nothing happens.
But, you know, you can check somebody's property if you think, you know, I mean, a safety thing. The fire department can come if they think it's in an unsafe condition. They, they, they see, it gets too convoluted that way. But the other thing, when you pay thirty-one or thirty-two hundred to come get a permit, guess what? That, that should be built in, where does that thirty-one hundred go? It should be built into that, that, that they do this. At least you go inspect the property, because sometimes they tell you it's one thing, and then it's not. So, somebody should at least go look at it once.
This, the, the fire, they are, we are, the city is supposed to go and inspect them. I get inspected by the, uh, fire department every year.
Every year, yeah.
And let me tell you, they're very strict, which is wonderful. I actually even, on our prop, on our year-round rentals, and, um, I go beyond, I don't get inspected there, but we have nine year-round rentals for our employees, and, believe me, all there's uh, fire extinguishers in every single apartment and all that.
Can I ask?
And they're not even supposed to be.
Who comes and inspects?
Nobody inspects those, I'm just saying. But
Okay.
They, but our hotel, which vacation rentals is a hotel.
Yes.
They are subject to the same inspection.
Yes, they are.
So, that is city.
So, so, I'm gonna go through the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Because I, let's focus on what the law is. What your conditions of approval currently provide is that there'll be an initial inspection, um, when a CUP is granted, and you'll, there, there's a, there's a fee that is on the fee schedule for inspections, and you'll pay that fee. And then every three years, you'll be re-inspected again, and you'll again pay the inspection fee that is in the municipal code.
That's what it says now.
That's what it says right now.
And it's not being done in many cases.
Do you have any idea what the fee is and is?
I'd have to look at, I don't have the fee schedule with me. But the fee schedule is based on, you know, how many, how many, how much time it takes. Then you look at the overhead cost, salary cost of it. The fee for CUP is based on staff time in preparing the application, the notice of fees that go out, the cost of paying your city attorney to wrestle with you during applications and hearings. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's all included. The three thousand one hundred bucks includes all the cost of the processing the CUP, and then there's separate fees for inspection.
But then there's also profit on top of that, because there's no way it costs thirty-two hundred dollars to do what we do for a CUP.
I, I don't, I, that, that fee schedule was adopted a while ago. I don't, well.
You know, and, and that, and that's fine, but I'm just saying, it's.
There's no, there's no profit. It is to cover the reasonable administrative charges of providing the services.
Lower that fee, Bart? You would lower that?
I think the fee's extremely high. To come in here and see you and tell you, I'm gonna pay you twelve percent of everything I make on my piece of property, and I'm gonna give you thirty-two hundred dollars before I do it, and then you say, I don't wanna see you pee in my town? Yeah, I think it's crazy. That's, I think that's insane. It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they'd probably be warned. They should be forewarned, that, you know, they might not get it.
And then if you appeal it, I think it's another three thousand bucks.
And then if you appeal it, if you, if you get turned down here, that's another thousand dollars to appeal.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah, but you're paying a bunch of people to, like, do your homework for you too. I mean, that's, that's what that's about.
A while ago, you mentioned, coming with the criteria, you know, and kind of going through what it is we review and breaking it down. It would be kind of fun to have that criteria for review of approval or denial. It's under a goal.
It, it's in, it's in the staff report.
Yeah, it's right here.
Right. But, but the problem is, I think there's not a vision of where we should go in the future with CUPs.
Right.
So, what we're doing is we're attacking it from a lower level with or without an idea of where that's taken us. Because we obviously allow them. So, is the goal to continue to allow more, but just make sure they're the perfect CUP?
Or cap them?
Or is that, which is a different, I mean, our criteria's gonna be different. If it's a cap, it's simple. It's just cap when you get one in and one leaves. But what I'm saying is, we don't, I don't, I'm right now just thinking, what is the perfect CUP? But we're still allowing more of them, and we know in the back of our heads, some are just disappearing. So, in theory, there's an equilibrium, but we don't have data, so we don't know. Um, but it would be fun to see what our review criteria, and then our conditions of approval, and how those, you know, what are those doing? Because I think part of the problem is, we all have an idea for an idea what it should be doing.
All I can tell you is, okay, I, I, I'll just, in terms of what are the conditions of approval doing? It's all voluntary at this point. I'm not aware of any enforcement action we've ever done in enforcing conditions of approval on, on a CUP. So, I can just tell you, functionally, I don't think, I don't think there's, we can point to anything in terms of, like, a lawsuit or a, you know, action.
So, to me, that sounds like a good thing.
And, well.
In a sense. I mean, that means people are being reasonably compliant.
So, I mean, moving forward, so.
I don't know, you know.
So, I mean, moving forward, are we here to, I'll just say it, are we here to eliminate CUPs?
I'm not.
Or eliminates the saturation part.
Not eliminate, it, to, to define better. The satur, what does saturation mean?
Right now, saturation just says you'll consider it.
It doesn't say.
It's not a positive or a negative.
Not a positive or a negative.
And in this, it says, when she talks about.
Vote no. On, on, based on saturation?
She can vote no on based on, it's a consider. And you can vote yes on, you know, this area's totally saturated, so no one's gonna care.
Right, it kind of goes both ways.
Except then there was one on upper, on the hills that was denied because there was no saturation. So, that's why we need to figure this out, because it's so.
Well, maybe saturation is a really good place to start, because that could be something that could be. And she also says in this report, you could take it by block to block. You could, she said, these are suggestions she makes, one hundred block, two hundred block, three hundred block, and you could set a limit of satur, of how many are.
Allowed.
Right. You, you, we, I don't think at this point it'd be possible to say, well, we can only have this many CUPs in Avalon. I mean, I think that's impossible, right?
Or maybe like, like I was saying, when one goes, we can.
Right, but at least, so what would it, what would that, what, do you think it would be reasonable to say, okay, today, we had a application for a place on Catalina, and we have made, this is theoretical, we have made an issue to say, all right, we don't want any more than twenty-five percent of the one hundred block, or the three hundred block of Catalina to be conditional use per, have, have transient rentals. So, then, what would have to happen before we could make a movement on that is that the planning department would have to tell us, which they do now, this is how many we know are there now.
But are those really being used?
Well, I think there are more than they say.
Come on, you're talking about theoreticals.
No, I'm talking about facts.
Well, yeah, but, okay, but.
You're talking about theoretical factors.
All right.
One person talk at a time, one person talk at a time.
Okay, everyone. Than what we know about, then it's worse than we thought, and we better put a cap on it as it stands.
But what I'm saying is, you have CUPs sitting there that aren't.
Well, I agree. I totally, well, that's not a problem.
You need to do an audit. You need to go up and down the block, and then you say, if somebody, well, I'm saying, so, then you, and, and you ascertain that there were no underground ones.
Well, I can't do that, but I'm saying, if there's more than what it shows on the books, then it's worse than we thought. So, if we have no cap at all, then it's even worse than we're considering.
Okay, well, it's gonna get even.
Because if you go count them up, then you just don't take any more applications. When you say one comes in, and then we have to check it, if, if, if you figure out that we're at saturation, then you just say no more applications.
And then that's gonna.
And that's whenever, or if, if we're five short, five, ten people are gonna run down there and apply.
And then, we also need to think about, everybody's gonna go underground, and then the city is gonna. and then the city is gonna get nothing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's the second largest income producer for the city of Avalon.
And I know, I, I know a lot of people have a hard time when we say that it is a second largest revenue for the city. However, we also need to understand that this is a resort, okay? I do understand the quality of life, I do. I live here. I wanna die here. I understand it, but I also understand, I have a job, and I can feed my children, and I have a roof over my head because of tourism.
You have a roof over your head, and a lot of people.
Because I have a job. I have a job.
It's, but if you.
And therefore, I have forty-four employees that have year-round employment because of our visitors.
And.
So let's just take a moment and understand.
No, I, I'm not, it's not about, I, I understand, but somewhere down the road, just like every place else, we will have an issue of supply and demand. We'll have more places for people to rent and use as temporary housing to make money than we will places for people to live, to work, your forty-four people that work for you. Are they living twenty-two to a, you, I mean, I'm just saying, what happens?
We were required by the municipal code before we broke ground to create housing. Now, there's been the museum, there's been the trailhead, there's been Vons, who was not required. So now, that is whose fault? Property owners?
But.
I was, we were required.
If, if you, are you just saying, are you saying there's no housing issue here?
I am not saying that. You're not understanding.
No, I understand that, that you.
Three major developments were not required to create housing because they transferred. Well, I, that's another issue, but I'm just saying, we.
I'm, I'm not gonna say that they weren't required, they were required to comply with the municipal code.
They were required to comply.
And if you're, if you're having twenty employees from two locations and putting twenty employees in one location, you don't have to create new housing. There have been issues with Vons, because, as I understood the last council meeting, because of the limitation on housing, they have to reduce certain services and hours, because if they did, they'd have to hire more people and they'd have to provide housing for it. But, but I, I just wanna, the record's straight.
Okay, I, I, I misspoke, okay? We, they transferred, they did it legit. But I'm saying, there was no extra housing provided.
And now they're in trouble.
And now we're in trouble, and this is where we get in trouble, okay? And I'm just saying, so, there's gonna be a problem when there's nobody coming to this island and nobody has, or has, they're not even gonna be able to pay rent.
Look, look right now, you've got a hundred rooms off the market, right downtown, do you not? At the, uh.
Atwater.
Atwater, it's a hundred rooms off the market. There's a whole nother hotel that's been taken over by the, I'm helping for employee housing. There's a whole bunch more tourists that don't come here. It affects all of us.
Bart, can you speak into the microphone, please?
This affects all, all of us in the fact that a lot of these rooms are now gone. They may be gone for a couple of years, you, I don't know how long, how long the Atwater project's gonna take.
Spring, as.
And, and all those rooms will be open in spring?
That's what they're saying, spring, I mean.
But we lose them at a time, and so we lose that income at a time.
So let's focus on the, the purported topic, which was saturation. So what do we wanna do about saturation?
A, find out what's really being rented and what's really not. B, find out who's renting under the market that's being advertised. Give us the data on it, so we at least know. Then we got a, a, a straight place to start in saturation. Because again, if we're looking at maps that don't mean anything, just because they have a CUP.
And I guess one thing would be to decide, is saturate, is high saturation ever a good thing?
Yeah.
And, or not, and is low saturation, I mean, when is?
Enough and up.
Well, sometimes it's good, let's say Euclid, it's, it's pretty highly saturated. No one seemed to mind, I mean, is that a street?
Well, no one's left to mind.
Well, let's say the last four property owners there who don't have one, and they're just gonna say, really, you're not gonna let me do it, everybody on the street has done it.
And that's another thing, is that a?
Just, is that fair? And then, but maybe streets where it's fifty percent is saturated, you know what I mean? Do we declare some streets as basically CUP streets?
See, I, I live in an area that is mostly CUPs.
But then, but then that would also imply that in other streets, it's not appropriate.
And our association is behind it, and when we drew our documents through the state of California, that was one of the things that we allowed short-term renting in our founding documents for our CCRs. So, so I'm just telling you, I live in an area like that.
Yes, you do.
And they're only there for so long, and then they're gone, but it makes a ton of cash for this town. A ton of cash.
I, I get it.
You know what I'm saying?
Right, but also, I'm, I'm just saying, for the most part, those are not affordable units for working people here in Avalon. And I do not believe when it was planned, I'm not a child or anything, I'm just saying, it, I don't, was there affordable housing planned for that? No, it wasn't.
Yes, they're right. See, if you've been here, we built, we built Tremont Development.
Yeah, there is a requirement, there are requirements.
Okay, great, that's fabulous, and see, that is, the, it's like Yoli was saying, that it has not happened consistently enough to make it possible, but I just think that it's becoming, you know, we're just pricing ourselves out of, it's gonna be me, you know, like, like people that are, who can afford to live here?
I think another problem is, not only are CUPs may or may not be making housing more expensive, people are just buying homes and not using.
Right.
And it's not just Avalon, I mean, it's.
All over, oh no, we are so not unique.
Some people have a lot of cash, and it's a way to put your money into something, and neighborhoods are getting empty.
I would like, see a vacancy tax.
Right, it's a, there's, it's really a state problem that I don't think the state is looking at. As far as I know, the housing.
The state's concerned.
But we're just caught up into that like everybody, it's like even if CUPs were frozen now, homes would still be purchased with cash and sat on and empty.
So the number one issue, well, there's two number one issues with the states looking at, just so you know what's coming. One is, um, you know, um, medical issues and states taking over a lot of, of medical issues and stuff, so that's Gavin Newsom's number one priority, is medical services, number two is housing.
Yeah.
So we just had a whole slew of bills that are requiring affordable housing in areas. I think Elizabeth Hall discussed that at a council meeting, two meetings ago or so. Um, the, uh, the concept of the vacant housing, um, has not surfaced in California yet, um, but it will, it has hit Vancouver, um, and Vancouver is, um, adopting regulations concerning, um, all the vacant condos that they have there and trying to, to address that.
I think money from Hong Kong started flooding into Vancouver, and it just, it even hit Washington State. The odd thing is, you can't build yourself out of this problem. You build more houses, they just get bought, and they sit empty. So, right now, the California strategy is to build more and build a bigger variety. But the problem with that strategy is it kinda doesn't matter if people are buying homes with cash.
Except, most of them don't want, you know, most people that are coming in.
No, they just wanna buy a place and have their money sitting in real estate because they don't like where their money is.
Cause it makes no money in vain.
And that's, it's just the system that unfortunately isn't being addressed, and who knows why?
That's why we need a vacancy tax, high enough.
Right, but until the state jumps on that, but the, but how does that help us with CUPs? Well, CUPs are one thing, we kind of have an idea of how to deal with them, so the decision is, you know, when are there too many in one neighborhood that it destroys the neighborhood? Or is the neighborhood really already a hotel, or not? And then, what is the perfect CUP? And we've kinda gotten close to that. You know, saturation to me would be really a good thing to continue to talk about, because I really, when a lot of neighbors complain, and it's clearly saturated, that makes me worry about it being oversaturated. When there are a lot of neighbors complain, and it's not saturated because it has real cohesive feel, it would totally disrupt the neighborhood, they're not really concerned.
And that's, are you talking about like NIMBYism? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not, I don't see NIMBYism as a bad thing. No, I'm just saying, when you have people who live in the neighborhood, clearly, it's a neighborhood with an identity and a full-time resident, and they know what it's gonna be like, because we all know what it's gonna be like, to have more. Does that carry weight, or can it carry weight, as opposed to a neighborhood where nobody comes in? You know, anyway, so the saturation one for me is only helpful when we get people coming in and saying things like, you know, this has never been a good neighborhood for hotels, it's a terrible walk, people have to get capped, it's gonna add, you know, whatever their logic is.
But see, and that's where I'm.
But that takes a lot of people to come in that still live in the neighborhood to show why it doesn't make sense as a hotel.
But that's where it's, like, the saturation, like, okay, so, it's, it's like, it's crazy, so, on the flats, it's oversaturated, but let's give them CUPs, cause it's oversaturated anyways. On the hill, it's not saturated, so don't give them CUPs because it's not saturated. However, they're part of this, the city and the whole CUP pro, you know what I'm saying? So they're, so it's just so, that's where you're like, okay.
Does the saturation criteria really want them spread out evenly through the city? I don't think so, but that could be, because it's value neutral, it doesn't really.
You could develop saturation maps or rules for different areas. You can want one for the flats and one for the hillside.
Yeah, and it, and it might be, you know, if we don't allow cars, how close can they be?
And it, and it probably happened this way, the, the flats part of town would be the least expensive part of town.
Right.
Well, that's, that's where I'm having a hard time.
Maybe all, maybe all CUPs should be really good viewing property.
Oh, that, yeah, I mean.
You know what I mean, so it's, you could come up with any criteria, but saturation right now isn't very helpful.
It does.
No, it isn't, no, you're right. And then the other issue that comes up with all of these is that when, like, a lot of people have no idea what's happening in their neighborhood, because even when we own it, we don't get letters sometimes, right? So if you're renting, you don't, you're not in the loop. So the saturation issue can also, which it could matter to neighbors, but maybe they're not aware, even though there is a sign, but I, I, I don't, you know, I can see how you could go by the same place every day, or you come from one side of the street, and you're never gonna walk by that. So it seems a little unjust, too.
That, and a renter may be reluctant to come forth.
The renter is reluctant to come forward, you are absolutely right, Micah.
Or they're just tired of it.
It's probably not a good idea to just rely on.
Charles Bershman is tired of coming forward.
Right.
You know, he's done it for years, and nothing, it doesn't matter, you know, they, just one after another, after another.
But has he, has he?
But we have been denying him.
Well, we didn't tonight.
No, and.
Tried to.
You know, it was a closed vote.
Yeah.
It was?
The first one was one off.
Three, four is pretty close.
So the arguments, you know, the saturation criteria wasn't helpful.
I think the saturation criteria needs to be a little more tight.
It's all laid out, and then it says, consider it.
Well, you know, Sandy just said, like, of course she feels badly about a yes vote.
Well, I mean, you have to vote following what the parameters are.
She's paying attention to that.
The law, she's paying attention to the law.
And Yoli the same way, the law says.
The law says, and honestly.
Yeah, but the law is, is the law, but the general plan is something else. You can't say there are too many.
And there is discretion with the law.
If we know, I, I'd love to know if there are too many.
Well, I can just go around and look at the signs on the block and say, I mean, whether they're not using them or not is not my issue, I can't sit there and.
But why isn't it the issue? Because the whole thing we're talking about is quality of life, and if they're not being used, how is it affecting the quality of life?
Okay, then take.
Because there's still a house that's not being used for year-round.
It's still a house that's not being used.
You're talking about like attacks on people not using their home.
Yes.
My god!
So now we're, okay, but, but, but.
Now you can't rent a second home unless you rent it out all the time.
Okay, so qual.
Because there's people who don't have a home. There's no reason for you to have two homes that you don't use when there's people who don't have a home.
Wow.
Well, I mean, a good example, Bart, would be the, uh, what's the, across from the street, can't remember the name of it, it's probably got fourteen apartments and cameras.
Yeah, 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 the White House.
The White House, and how many years has that sat empty? And is of no value to anybody, and.
It's a negative value.
Mm-hmm, maybe to the owner.
Well.
I mean, but who are you to determine, because you don't own a house, that everyone else should pitch in and give you one? How about we go to work and get one? But this crap that you think, hey, I don't have one, you have two, that's not right. It's not, that's not even America.
Let's, 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 let's address, let's address the audience and keep our comment to the public and try not to go after each other. In fact, you know what, we've been going for three hours. Let's take a bio break for five minutes and kind of.
A bio break.
And kind of, uh, get cooler heads and come back and, um, go.
Do you know that in, um, in Cleveland, there's a company that owns, moves shoes in front of people's houses there? This has been filmed?
Oh, yeah. It's gonna, it's gonna be a new channel.
We're on, we're on, we're back.
You too, Jenny.
We're back. Okay, um, so I'd like to get back on topic, and, um, I, I think we all had some, uh, discussions regarding the saturation and the concerns, um, and I'm thinking maybe we need to, for the next agenda, get, uh, line items on what we really want to focus on, and I think that with everybody's, I, from the input that I'm getting here, that maybe we need to really crack down on saturation. Maybe the city attorney can go ahead and look into the vacancy tax, do some more research. Um, I think we need to see if we really need, if we wanna go CUP or license. And I think those are three topics that I think that we should focus on.
Can.
In addition to coming back with the information that we can best available information on how many CUPs we have, what's the process of eliminating them, where are we in terms of the use, intensity, I would say, call it the intensity of use. In other words, the CUP that's used every weekend versus the CUP that's used once a weekend to retain the license?
Can I suggest though, or can, I, I really like what you said. Is it a possibility that, that we could really move for, cause I think, I agree with, Sandy was saying, sometimes we feel like conflicted because of the saturation issue. And I think that would be a really, to, to approve or disprove, but if you follow directly the code without taking into consideration, you know, it, then you have to do it if that's what you feel, because the code says this is what comprises saturation. So it, would it be possible that we could, like, really talk about such saturation apart, you know, as a, as a separate entity, then maybe make a change with that, with the city council's possibility, and then come back and keep going with the other topics we talked about?
But they all fit together. If we're gonna move forward.
You, you could, you could always, you could always look at saturation next time. And then what you could do, which we've done this before, is you have the planning director deliver a report to the city council and say, this is what the, uh, was discussed at the planning commission. Do you give us direction to amend the code now to deal with saturation while we're tackling these other issues?
Do you give us what?
Give, give, have the planning commission give direction to move forward on saturation while the other issues are going, if you wanna handle it seamlessly? That way, that way, you put the issue up there, you discuss what you're thinking about, where, where your thoughts are, and the council can decide, tackle that right now while you're doing everything else. Or they could say, that's a one piece of the puzzle, wait till everything's together, and then they may say, get a quick move on it. But that's a council's decision as to when they, when they amend the municipal code and in what manner they amend it.
Yeah, but I mean, saturation now is a neutral. So if we decide to, to change it one way or the other, then what do we do? But if we don't have the information about the saturation, about how, you know, whatever, if we don't have that information, it, it all, unfortunately, it all meshes together.
We're gonna bring that at the next.
No, that's what I mean, but if we don't, changing it from a neutral to a positive or a negative, but we need the information about what exists, so, what, what do we do with it if we change, change the definition?
But can't we know what we know, and then we can't know what we don't know? So if we just know what we. Well, but if we do that, Sandy, then it, then, okay, so, oh, just say there's five on the street, and, but there's really ten on the street, and we change the saturation criteria, it's not. and, but there's really 10 on the street and we change the saturation criteria, it's not gonna get any worse if we discover five more. It will just stop it. So. What do you do with it then? It's saturated. So we don't know how saturate, we need to have, find out how saturated. And then when we find out how saturated it is, what do we do about it? It's gotta work together. Do we cut it off?
Can't we have a goal of what saturation we want first? We get our goal and then we figure out.
That's what I mean. It's gotta work together. We gotta figure out the formula and what it is. But we do know what we do know.
We can figure out a goal as we're figuring out.
We do know what we think, you know? But, but that's what we have to work with now. We can't do on supposition or speculation or maybe until we have, you know, we figure out every case, if, if we have that there's this many, to me, that's the basis of what we should operate from. We don't quite know that. We know that you can't. We have an idea. We do have conditional use permits that have been approved and so we, we can know that. We can't know who's breaking the law. No, not, we can't, we have, remember we've got.
But I guess what Sandy's saying is, well, okay, so according to the saturation maps right now that we have, Clarissa has looked saturated, Eucalyptus looks saturated. It's there because those all have conditional use permits. So what I think Sandy's trying to see is which ones are actually in violation. And once we find out which ones are in violation.
Or not being used.
And then go through the process of possibly what you said, sending letters, doing all that. Then they can get their, they'd have to come in front of us and they can get their permit revoked. And so once that is in play or, or then that way we can see where we're at.
Wait, wait, so, wait, how, after we find out.
If they're in violation.
Who's in violation? People that already have conditional use permits?
Yes, violation by not paying their taxes. Therefore, in the, in the application, part of the condition is you have to pay city taxes a certain time, yearly.
But isn't that two different things? Saturation and whether they're in compliance with the rules that have been, uh, or with the ordinances that go with a conditional use permit?
Well, isn't that gonna take a while?
Well, and I, and I'm saying to myself, okay, right now there are 44 signs in the windows on Clarissa. So if you say, i- if, if they're, I mean, to me, that's a lot. I mean, maybe not, but that's an issue of.
What if 25 of them don't get leased? What if 25 of them don't pay tax and they never put a person in there? So is it really saturated? You don't know.
Well, but.
That's a long shot.
And then how long is that gonna take?
I mean, you, you just don't.
Well, no, I don't know. Okay, so, okay, okay.
One, one person at a time, so that people on, watching TV can understand.
But can we just have, can we set a goal, say, I want X percent sat- saturation? And then we find out who's all in and that's how we get to that point. But can we set a goal before we find out who's legal, who's not legal, who's complying, who's not?
Or can't we set, set a number or a percentage and then say, once we find out, oops, we're way over or revoking, oh golly, somebody else could have a conditional use permit. Well, no, we could set it, if you wanna set a, a percentage, but that's in different streets.
Yeah, well, you could, you could do that, but you have the zones with different.
Yeah, in this report. That's what he's talking about, upgrading the map of, of what your goals are. And are they filled up? Are they oversaturated? Right. How many are there left?
Aren't there places like upper terrace that just doesn't have any or has one? And the neighbors just come unglued if anybody applies and.
There's, there is the thought that some areas are classier than others. And, and the, I, I'm not gonna mention names, but there are people who think some hills are better than others. And some hills, it's okay to saturate them. Not my hill. That's the NIMBY deal.
But that's what's gonna get us in trouble. So we need to figure out.
If we set, in, in, if we set per block or per number block or whatever, if we put it at 25% then, or whatever. I'm just making that speculative.
Scott had a good idea.
What did he say?
Go to the council, get them to say, ask them if they, Scott, can you?
But you have to, no, okay. You have a discussion on what you wanna do with saturation, kinda goals. Do you want, do we wanna create zones for, for saturation? Do we wanna put percentage limits on it? And then you have a report delivered to the council. This is what the planning commission's considered. Do you want to labor us to labor and actually, cause all you do is you recommend to the council and they've gotta do it. And if the council has no interest in saturation or, or in their areas, then I, I think you have a preliminary idea so that you're not, you're not just asking them, do you wanna, us look at saturation, but a preliminary idea, put it to them. If they're not interested in it, then there's not the time and effort and fighting that goes into saturation.
But isn't this what this says? They asked us to consider saturation. So they may not like, they may send it back to us and say, we're not particularly thrilled with what you did. We'd like you to. Is that how it works?
I think saturation was one of the topics that they asked.
It was.
But, but it was not in such a detail in terms of, do we have different saturation zones for different areas in the city? Do we, you know, do, do we wanna set a, a, a percentage level? The discussion was, as I recall, and this may be wrong, but looking at the code right now, it just says, consider saturation. But there's no guidance as to whether that's a positive or negative thing. And there's no criteria that it's automatically denied or approved. It's just, once it reaches a certain level, you have to consider it.
I think that's what we're talking about, right?
That's the question. What's the level?
Well, no, it's what the level and, and what happens. Cause right now they say, if it's, if it's surrounded by a certain number of people and it's only people that are full-time residents, saturation as currently defined only applies to a home that is a year-round resident. Is that home gonna be surrounded by, I think, three fourths of, um, transient occupancies? And if so, what the municipal code says is, you shall consider it. It's not whether it's positive or negative.
Couldn't we recommend that we would like to have that be, it's not just that be an issue for possible denial, but it could also be, we'd have, we also would recommend that in this particular area.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, you could. Yes, you could. Absolutely.
Okay, so Yoli, is that within the perimeters of what you're dreaming about?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a happy dream or a nightmare?
Well, it's a nightmare, but it has to start somewhere.
Yes, and, and, and keep in mind, this has been trying to change for 10 years or longer and we're really, and so every, you know, and so. Yeah.
So next meeting, we're gonna discuss, get the data, data from what we have planned, we're gonna discuss the concept of saturation, whether you wanna have it in certain levels in a way that we can present something to the council about, this is what we're thinking. Should we run with it and develop a, cause what you're asking is, do you want us to develop an amendment to the municipal code that specifically addresses saturation?
I see that and then I see taking up these other issues as time goes by.
Okay.
Is what the, and that's kind of what Yoli's.
Well, I think, I think at the next meeting, if there's enough time, we can tackle four subjects. I think they were, one, just getting the data, two, having a discussion on saturation. Three, I gave you a memo about what other cities have done with respect, with respect to vacancy taxes, if they're, you know, like that. And then if you want to, we can also just have a general discussion on, do you wanna going forward, change them to licenses so they don't run with the land or not? And that, the, each one of those can take maybe a half hour.
Oh, yikes.
That's positive.
In your dreams, dude.
Well, I think there's some consensus already on, I mean, getting the data is interesting. Saturation may, may take a while. The memo on, um, you know, the vacancy taxes, you know, you just look at the memo. And then I think there's general, I may be wrong, but I'm thinking there's the general consensus that maybe we wanna go forward and have some kinds of a licensing scheme rather than runs with the land. I will tell you that when you look at the timeline, in April of 2009, there was a draft ordinance that would have changed CUPs, um, to licenses.
Yeah.
But it was never adopted by the council. It was considered by the council.
But this is a new council.
And also, can we, can we have a consensus that if we don't know exactly everything about every conditional use permit and the use of that thing, that we can still talk about saturation?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I don't, I mean.
I would like to just, just.
The best available knowledge.
Just so you know, I would, I would like to, being selfish here, I wanna get as much of this done at the next planning commission. So there's some continuity here, cause I'll be here at the next planning commission.
What is the date?
Uh, April, hang on, 2009, April 17th?
Okay.
Because I'm gonna be, um, on my fifth honeymoon with my wife.
Good for you.
I'm missing the meeting of the 15th, no, the meeting of the 22nd. So I'd like to front load the CUP discussion, um, at the next meeting. So that I can, I mean, obviously I'll have, probably have Megan here, uh, who covered the last meeting. And she does CUPs all the time, but I'd like to, you know, kind of front load it for my involvement at the next meeting. So.
So, um, so we have the, the three items that we're gonna put on for next, next agenda meeting. And, um, uh, is there any way possible we can get a better saturation map? You know, to, like, when we get the map, cause it just seems a little sometimes difficult.
What about if you put the whole map with just the flats in play?
Yeah.
That one area. And we got the information for that one area. That's our biggest contention, is the flats, right? We all kind of agree to that?
So I wanna say something. I personally went through every street on the flats and took pictures of the signs, property managers. And then I got the list of the TOT. So the staff reports you have, they're active, they're paying TOT. But I can definitely create a, um, saturation map of the flats. I have already done that. I provided it to Commissioner Patterson and I can just provide you an updated one.
Email it to all of us?
Of course.
That'd be great.
I will try my best to have it for the next meeting. Within a couple of weeks, it won't be that hard.
It's not that, it's just, it's just kinda hard to, maybe.
When I, when I actually create the saturation maps for your staff report, I try not to, um, only focus on the street. Not like the whole. So that's why it's that way.
Okay.
But if you would like me to.
Street, whatever, you could just kinda start looking at it and seeing what percentage of what's down there is actually CUPs on it. And the ones that you're showing, they actually all have CUPs that are paid taxes.
Yes. I got that list from finance. I double-checked and I added one there.
Okay, so is everybody okay with?
Where are we going for the next meeting?
Where are we going for the next?
Four items.
Okay.
Data, saturation, vacancy tax, license versus CUP.
Okay.
What if there's 10 applications for CUPs?
We already have.
There might be.
There might be.
You never know. But, and, and we need to, we need to keep in mind too also that we haven't changed anything. We have, you know, as far as the application process, as far as the municipal code. So if we do have 10 applications that come in, we have to follow.
Yeah, that, with, that's why.
So that's why we, I know that's why we need to get on this.
But you can also say, let's wreck in the neighborhood.
What, excuse me?
It, it, the, the general plan in certain areas, particularly the flats, if you believe there are too many, you can make that statement. Just saying. Because that's how I feel about. You can make this statement, but there's no teeth in it because it's a neutral statement. But I can suppose now, if I don't, if I think it's not okay, if I think it's, I'm inconsistent with the quality of it.
Does, um, any business from the, anything from the staff, no, that you'd like to report? Any commissioner business?
Oh, I'd like to say you are one spunky group.
We have just come alive because this is like, I was just saying, we've been so. We have some hot topics and, and everybody's passionate about, you know, all these items. And I, I completely respect that and, and I respect that we're all here for, and I know we're all here for the same. We're all here for the good of our community and the good of our residents and the good of our, and we all need to respect one another and we all need to move forward and, and work together because nothing's gonna get done if, if this isn't a group effort. And I hear every single one of your personal and, and opinions and the way you feel on different situations and agenda items that come in front of us. We do need to follow the code. We do need to follow policies. And the quicker we, we get everything together and get it to the city council and it comes back, then things can change. Like I said, it's been 10 years that nothing has changed. So I hope that having everybody here as we are every month, that we can get something done.
Sounds good.
It beats complacency.
It does. But we still have to follow.
No, we do.
The code and the law. Okay, do we have any other commissioner business? Okay. Good night, Tony. Meeting's adjourned.
Get better, Yoli. What a drag. How long you been doing that?